Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, July 19th regular meeting of the Walnut Creek City Council. The city councils conducting this meeting from the city council chamber and staff are complying with the current regulations of the California Department of Public Health and Cal OSHA for safe indoor meetings. As the courtesy and technology permitting, members of the public may continue to provide live, remote, oral public comment via the city Zoom video conferencing platform. However, the city cannot guarantee that the public's access to teleconferencing technology will be uninterrupted, and technical difficulties may occur from time to time. Members of the public desiring to provide comments at the meeting are encouraged to attend the meeting in person, as many of you got the memo and are here today doing. As some attendees may be participating in their first Walnut Creek City Council meeting or their first teleconference meeting, I wanted to welcome everyone and talk briefly about the public comment process. For each agenda item, there will be an opportunity for public comment on that item. Thus, if you desire to speak to an item on the agenda this evening, please hold your comments until the council considers that item. Additionally, we have a section on the agenda entitled "Public Communications," which is for public comments on items that are not on the agenda. Any comments during public communication should not relate to an item that is on the agenda this evening. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be initially allocated for public communications for items not on the agenda. When I open the public comment period, please use the raised hand feature or press *9 if you are connected by audio only. This will alert the clerk that you have a comment that you would like to provide. We ask that everyone who wishes to speak on an item, please use the raised hand feature to state your intent to speak when the item is called. If you are attending in person, please complete a yellow speaker identification card at the back of the room and line up behind the lectern over here at the appropriate time. Wait your turn, and once brought into the meeting, state your name and city of residence for the record. Please note that in-person public comments will be taken before any remote public comments. Please also keep in mind that this is a city business meeting. The city councils adopted rules of decorum to ensure that meetings are conducted efficiently and effectively, and that all members of the public have a full, fair, and equal opportunity to be heard. All remarks should be addressed to the city council. Please do not use profanity during your comments. Given the COVID-19 pandemic and the increased number of speakers that have wanted to make comments during the—on various issues during our meetings, and consistent with city policies related to public comments, each speaker will have two minutes to make your remarks. The Zoom feed for each speaker will cut off automatically at two minutes, and the council also accepts oral comments. Written comments submitted and received up to two hours before the meeting have been posted to the city's website for public review and are included in the meeting record but will not be separately read into the record. To provide a live, remote public comment, join the Zoom video conferencing meeting. The meeting ID and password are, at the bottom of the screen, the ID is 882-5838-1735, and the passcode is 766406. Should you choose to not provide comments but would like to nonetheless view the meeting, you may do so in one of the following ways: YouTube Live, visit the City of Walnut Creek's YouTube channel; cable broadcast, Comcast Channel 28, Rossmore Channel 26, WAVE Channel 1028, and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. You can also livestream the meeting online on the city's website. At this time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Councilmember Darling?
I'm here.
Councilmember Haskew?
Here.
Councilmember Wilk?
Here.
Mayor Protam Silva?
Here.
Mayor Francois?
Here. Next on the agenda is the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull any item for discussion?
I would like to pull item 2E, please.
Was that 2E?
E is in Edward.
Thank you. Any other council member wish to pull an item for discussion?
No, erase that.
Okay. Then I would ask if any member of the public would like to discuss or pull an item on the consent calendar for discussion. If you're here in the chamber, you can fill out a yellow card at the back for an item that's on the consent calendar. If you're joining us by Zoom, please use the raised hand feature or press *9 if you're connected by audio only. And again, this is just for the items that are on the consent calendar. Not seeing anyone in the chamber wishing to address the council on an item on the consent calendar, so I'll turn to our city clerk and see if we have anyone on Zoom.
We have no speakers for items on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could I have a motion on the consent calendar except for item 2E?
Move to approve consent calendar items 2A through D and G.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Protam Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item 2E, Mayor Protam Cindy Silva.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Item 2E is a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a license agreement with the California Department of Military for operating a temporary homeless shelter during the winter months again this year, and it will be operated by, on our behalf, by the Trinity Center. And I pulled this item to thank Trinity Center for their work on behalf of all of us to support and work with the unhoused and those who are of—at risk of becoming unhoused or the working poor. Their continued willingness to manage and operate the winter night shelter is commendable, and we truly appreciate the help. And with that, I'm willing to move the item.
And I just wanted to make a comment on that as well. Probably during the winter months, the number-one question I get from the community is, where do the homeless stay during the winter? They may not know about the winter shelter nights, and when I'm able to tell them that we're able to help provide for this and that it—and through the Trinity Center and their in the armory, people have—that take the time to ask me are thrilled that there is that opportunity that is for them, and so with that, I'll second that.
And I'll add my comment to the string. One of the things—you know, we've dealt with this year in and year out, and there was a lot of concern by people at the beginning, and I have just been so thrilled with the work that Trinity Center has done. There has been no issues for years, and they've done a tremendous job on this, so I really appreciate it, so I'll third it.
Well, I'll fourth it if I could, but I—I—yes, the Trinity Center has been a magnificent partner to the city and is doing tremendous work to help people that really need help, and I'm proud that the city is partnering with them on—on seeing the winter armory, winter shelter occur for the sixth or seventh year now, I believe. Would you like to fifth it?
I would like to. I would also like to remind how bold we were as a council to vote on making this all possible. Gosh, was it eight, nine years ago?
Seventy-seven.
Seven. Time passes while you're having fun. And—how much the neighborhood has accepted everything and actually is one of its biggest fans, so thank you for the citizens who have helped us and maintained this all those seven years. We really, truly appreciate it, and so—I'm done.
Thank you, Councilmember Haskew. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Protam Silva?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Councilmember Haskew?
Aye.
Mayor Francois?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, next on the agenda is public communications. This is the portion of the meeting that's reserved for comments that are on items not on the agenda. Under the Brown Act, the council cannot act on items raised during public communications but may respond briefly to statements made or questions posed, request clarification, or refer the item to staff. Consistent with Section 9.5 of the City Council Handbook, 30 minutes will be allocated at this time for public communications for items not on the agenda. Additional time for items not on the agenda will be provided at the end of the meeting if necessary. Again, if you're joining us here in person, welcome again, and if you'd like to speak on an item that's not on the agenda, if you could, please fill out a speaker card and line up as these nice people are doing along the wall there before the lectern. If you're joining us on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature or press *9 if you're connected by audio only. We're going to hear from the folks in the room first and then turn to Zoom and have additional public comment. At this time, I would note that the time is 6:12, and we will take public comments—it's actually 6:10. I have different clocks here. I'll call it 6:12. We'll take public comments on items not on the agenda until approximately 6:42, and then the remainder of any such comments at the end of the open session portion of the meeting. And I would just also add too, again, reiterating that it is a business meeting, we would ask that you kindly refrain from applause or cheering. Want to make sure that everyone who wants to express an opinion on an item feels comfortable and welcome in coming to the lectern and doing so. So with that, please, the mic is yours.
Just sit here. Thank you. Okay, yeah, you can raise them. Yeah, sure. Hello. I'm Michelle Sheehan. Is it on? You can hear me? Okay. I'm from Walnut Creek, and I'm here tonight speaking for supporters of Save Seven Hills Ranch. Please raise your hand if you don't have a sign that lets them know that you're a supporter. Thank you. I speak for the 4,000 people who have signed the petition asking for a better plan than the one currently proposed for the ranch. We ask you to support us, too. We are not anti-development, but the current proposal is overdevelopment. It requires that the county grant an extreme change from the current land use designation, a change completely out of proportion with its surroundings, which includes Heather Farm Park and the land itself. It is not sensible. It is supersized. To review, the proposal is for a walled-off mega complex which will include a three- and four-story building with the footprint the size of the Warriors' San Francisco Chase Center and an 88,000-square-foot commercial-type healthcare facility. It will level all but one hill of the current Seven Hills Ranch, eliminate 400 trees, and despite the fact that it is currently 30 acres of open space, the proposal effectively incorporates no green space and no public access. It is all cost and little benefit to your community. And then there is the "we need housing" question. The developer claims that seniors moving into this new development will leave reasonable, affordable Walnut Creek homes that our workforce or young people can move into. Yet, the deposits and support for the proposal largely come from the La Mirinda and Alamo communities. Again, Walnut Creek does not benefit. But mainly, it's just too big. Understand that a cruise ship is coming into your city. You, really more than anybody else, can decide what port fees and requirements you ask for before allowing it to dock. Don't wait. We want you to come off the bench, step up to the plate, and start swinging. Send the message all the way to Martinez that your constituents are not happy with this oversized plan. Assure us that you are playing for our team. You are our city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sheehan.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and other fine people. I'm Linda Rhymat-Coburg, and I'm representing the Walnut Creek Homeless Task Force this evening. The Walnut Creek Homeless Task Force is hosting a free public community forum on homelessness in Walnut Creek on Tuesday, July 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. That's next Tuesday. This is a hybrid event this time. The forum will be held right here in the Walnut Creek City Council Chambers in Walnut Creek, but it will also be held via Zoom for attendees who wish to participate online. Our forums are designed to give community members a platform to learn about the homeless services and continuum of care available to unhoused people and those at risk in Walnut Creek, and the actions that are being taken by the city, by the county, and by nonprofits to address homelessness. For this fifth in a series of forums, the work of the Walnut Creek Police Department Homeless Outreach Program, HOP, will be showcased. Featured speaker will be Walnut Creek Police Department Sergeant Gary Silva, who will speak about HOP and introduce the HOP team, Officer Adamson and Officer Chaney, who will address both quality-of-life and public safety issues surrounding homelessness in Walnut Creek, followed by Q and A. We also have a panel representing several resources that work together to provide care and homeless services. On the panel will be representatives from Health Housing and Homeless Services through the Contra Costa Health Services. Also CORE, Coordinated Outreach Referral and Engagement Program, also through Health Housing and Homeless Services. We have somebody representing the Walnut Creek—City of Walnut Creek Community Development, Trinity Center, Loaves and Fishes, and the Walnut Creek Homeless Task Force. And I believe Mayor Francois will be giving some opening comments. Thank you for that. This is a free public forum, but virtual attendees will have to RSVP in order to receive the Zoom link. That Eventbrite.com link is so long, I will simply ask people to please go to the website Walnut Creek Homeless Task Force. The—the web URL is WCHomelessTaskForce.org. That's the Walnut Creek Homeless Task Force website. We invite everybody to join us, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rhymat-Coburg. Thank you for coming and letting the public know about that important task force meeting.
Thank you.
My name is Steve Curtis. I live on Gilboa Drive in the Heather Farms development. I am a retired real estate broker and a not-quite-retired architect, both for almost a half a century. I am here to deal with the Seven Hills project. My concern primarily is that it creates an issue of what I would define as leapfrog zoning. None of the zoning within the county or within the city of Walnut Creek in the nearby vicinity contains anything approximating this kind of development. It would—approving this by the county will create a scenario that will disrupt, in my opinion, disrupt the compatibility and smooth flow of additional projects and homeowners within the area for decades to come. It is not something that is in the best interest of the city. It is certainly not the best interest of the neighbors. The building is—the major building is some 49 feet high, while it's sitting 30 feet below the homes in Heather Farms. The roof of that building will be 17 feet above the highest home in Heather Farms. So instead of having a circumstance where they can look out and see rolling hills, they'll see flatland because the development proposes to completely turn the rolling hills into a flatland area for their construction. This is a flatland project. This is a commercial project. This is not a residential project, and I don't think that it's in the best interest of the city or the neighbors to continue with that process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. Next speaker.
This is—I'm Rosemary Nishikawa. I live at 549 Allegheny Drive. This is a Seven Hills Ranch. For those who haven't seen it, it's far larger than downtown Walnut Creek. Of course, it's 30 acres. The Speaker Corporation proposed plan is a business park. They are not calling this project housing. As a matter of fact, they are building a hospital, swimming pools, several restaurants, tennis courts, bocce courts, and just 30 acres of cement, which will level this property flat bulldozing over 400 trees, 350 of which are protected oak trees. There is no way Speaker would even consider this project without the city council approving the right-of-way to Kinross Drive. How can you possibly think this is okay and put a 30-acre business park in the middle of our residential neighborhood? This is not a NIMBY issue. It's simply what-in-the-heck-are-you-thinking issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Nishikawa. Please, welcome.
Oh, thank you. Hi, good evening. My name is Adina Verdi, and I'm here to speak about the Seven Hills project. Where do I begin? I—I do see this as a commercial project, and I've talked to a lot of youth—I'm in education—that just—they can't understand this. I mean, they might not be in the audience today, but they—they just can't understand why there's more development. You know, they say you—you can't stop progress, you can't stop City Hall sometimes, but you can regulate it. So I'm here to really ask for the next generations to come that will look at you and your decisions, that you do the best that you can if this thing goes through, and it's too bad the developers grabbed it before the city did, and we couldn't have had a Shell Ridge situation. But if this does go through, please try earnestly to look at the trees, the nature, and look at whatever can be saved for our future generations. I do think, starting at $1 million, most of these properties that are going to be developed out there are not for the needy and they're not for the general population. I do think this is senseless, commercial endeavor, and—you know, I go down to Heather Farms a lot. I live near there, and I walk my dog, and I see just a ton of people down there enjoying our parks that—we've created, you know, for the public, and I think this just diminishes the class that—that Walnut Creek has portrayed for the other cities that are out east or— or out west towards the city that haven't thought through this kind of thing. I wish we could reverse it for our next generation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Verdi. Welcome, young man. You can put—pull that microphone down a little bit if it's more convenient for you.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Henry Donnell, and I am 11 years old. I live on Club View Terrace, and I go to the Seven Hills School. In first, second, third, and fourth, I see the land, Seven Hills Ranch. It is a truly spectacular place. I really believe that the education in Seven Hills is a really good opportunity, and it'll be disruptive to the children learning the animals, the deer, the soil, the trees, and even the teachers when there's—there are construction noises. I live on a road that has a direct path to the property. I may not go to school—that—I may—I may have trouble going to school, and it's going to take me a lot longer. Sign the petition. I hope you're with me. It's too big and destructive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donnell.
I'm William Catrell, living at 2372 Walnut Boulevard here in Walnut Creek. Thank you for hearing our comments, and you are our representatives for we residents. Beginning in 1969 and continuing for over two years, my wife and I searched much of California for the best place to settle, and a perfect home was found on the north end of Walnut Boulevard here in Walnut Creek. Its spacious lot was filled with huge oak and almond trees, flowering bushes, and the entire street had a beautiful, park-like appearance. This has been my family house for over 50 years, a half-century. Now, this neighborhood that is among the most desirable residential parts of our city with its somewhat rural appearance is threatened with drastic change. Developers unwanted a huge project that will ruin it forever. The acreage fronting out on Seven Hills Ranch Road, just a short walk from my house, would be devastated by moving 225,000 cubic yards of dirt, cutting down at least 400 oxygen-producing trees. This is home to countless wildlife that thrive here. The deer, turkeys, songbirds, and others will lose their natural environment for decades. The historic home site zoning for this entire area is for a minimum half-acre, and many of our states are larger. Just moments away, a recent home sale was the highest recorded in our city at well over $4 million, and many others are valued at more than $2 million. Property values could be destroyed from this terrible change. A similar, very large senior care housing project is simultaneously now being planned in the office park section of the city on much more suitable land. We don't need two big facilities as these are within short distance of each other. It's imperative this be denied, and the—we hope to not allow it in any similar form, and I—it's—
Thank you, sir.
I want you to be against the two. Not in my backyard. You're darn right.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Hi, my name is Rosalie Howard. I live on Sand Wedge Place in Walnut Creek, and I want to keep reiterating that this proposal is not housing. It is not housing in any way. If we are to sacrifice as a county that 30 acres of pristine land that only ever had one house, one barn, a little stables, and a couple of horses on it in its entire existence, the closest thing you could get to open space besides the designated open space—if we make that sacrifice and develop that area as a county, it needs to be serving the housing needs of our workers and our family. This proposal, none of the 450 units count towards the RHNA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation—I believe you guys are very familiar with that acronym—it does not count one unit towards that because it's not housing. It is not required to have any affordable market or below-market units because it is not housing. It does not require any setbacks, any green buffers, any of the mitigations that housing developments routinely have to give up because it is not housing. The units are leased. They cannot be passed down to the heirs to enrich in the next generation of those who are going to have difficulty buying housing because it's not housing. It just serves a narrow slice of the population, a gated, private facility the public will have no access to that many other facilities serve. It is actually a commercial enterprise. It should require a change to the county amendment all the way to commercial in zoning or land use because it's not housing. It's an island of county land surrounded by Walnut Creek. Walnut Creek bears all the brunt and gets none of the benefits. I'm not saying we can keep it open space forever. I'm saying it's the wrong development for this site, and I want our council to go to the county and work with them and say, "This is a no-go. Give us a better plan." We, the citizens of Walnut Creek, are asking for a better plan for that parcel. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. Again, I—I would just ask—just remind everyone that, again, it's a business meeting. I want everyone who comes to the mic to feel comfortable, and so please refrain from cheering or jeering. I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lilian Leong. I actually hadn't planned on speaking, but I was so inspired by people here and learning a lot of things I didn't know about this development. My husband and I are homeowners here off of Homestead and also have a private medical practice in town, so—and my children go to Seven Hills. So I agree. I don't think this is the right development for the—the space. I do understand that it is money that would be coming into the coffers, and so, you know, you're considering that, but I would like to, you know, have you step up and bargain for something that would be a better fit for the community and our city and future development. So I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
During the early times of the conquistadors, there are writings that show there were more fish than there was water in the local streams and creeks. So we have an unbelievable opportunity. Legend has it that the city council at the time—or people making choices—had it—had the decision to choose between oil refineries and Stanford. Would you fish in that land and feed your family? This is of the most sacred Native American land, truly, absolutely irreplaceable, and this is a time where, much like close to us, we have land that is preserved forever. This is the moment that you can work— This is the moment that you can work together with the Board of Supervisors and truly create a vision for the earth that will help society for the future.
Thank you, sir. Can you please state your name for the record?
Andrew Verdi.
Thank you, Mr. Verdi.
Okay, my name is Jack Waddell. I've been a Walnut Creek resident since 1983. And I live in Siskiyou Drive, 1548 Siskiyou Drive, and I've been there for about six and a half years now. I just wanted to make a little vignette example here. I went to a program put on by the developer out at the Lafayette Park Hotel. He presented a rather glowing report of their development. One question that was asked, though, is what about the traffic there? He goes, oh, these are all old people. They don't go anywhere, you know? My understanding is the only exit and entrance to this place is a little court that comes off Marchbank Drive. I don't think that, unless there's emergency exit, but this is no emergency, a normal case. But the traffic there is going to be absolutely insane. Marchbanks has cars parked on both sides of it now with the ambulances and the supply trucks and the people coming and going from that one little area. It's going to jam things up. It really is. And I think that everybody's going to get dumped out on Ignacio Valley Road. There's no other place to go. And so that's going to be really great for everybody else coming in from Clayton and over the hill, Pittsburgh. It's just going to be just too crowded. It's just too crowded, and you need a smaller development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waddell. Are there any other members that would like to speak that are here in the chamber? If you could, please line up. We have a few others on Zoom. I'll call them next.
Oh, sure. So my name is Clarissa Soto, and I also live at Heather Farms Development. And actually, I agree with my neighbor here. We already have a big issue with traffic in Walnut Creek. We all know that Trade Boulevard and Ignacio Valley Road is already a problem. I happen to be a Realtor. Some of you have been into our offices, speaking about all the plans that you have, you have been working on to improve the traffic on Ignacio Valley Road and as well as Trade Boulevard. We have all the people from Clayton coming down Ignacio. We all know that it's already an issue. On my neighbor's note, the developer said this is for all people, 55 and over. Actually, I'm heading to my 50s, and I have a long way to go driving on Ignacio Valley Road, hopefully. My husband as well. And I think many of my neighbors here are not old people, and we are driving. We all drive in our cars every single day, going back and forth to work, to work and back at home. So I don't think it's for all people only. But so it's going to get crowded. The traffic is terrible. The little entry is King Ross, and it's a very narrow street. So I'm guessing that they do have a plan for fire in case of an emergency. That is going to be an issue as well because in the case of a fire or anything like that, there is no way to go. We can have another problem like Rosemore. Rosemore, we all know, they have a problem with their security in case of an emergency. There's only one way in and one way out. We can create something very similar if we create a development that enormous as the proposed development. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else lined up at the mics, so I'm going to turn to the clerk and see if we have any speakers on Zoom for public communications.
We do have about four speakers on Zoom. First up is Pete Bennett.
Do we have?
Good evening, Mr. Bennett. We can hear you.
Greetings, everybody. I forgot to turn on the video. It'll come on here. Here I am. First off, thank the council. It's a tough statement. You're a recent graduate from the Leadership Program, Joe. Sergeant Joe, I call him. Good guy, helped me quite a bit. I'm still housed in spite of all of the negative efforts placed on me. And in terms of Seven Hills, the ubiquitous real estate investment trusts that are rolling into cities all across the United States, they're basically the same people that own the land around the Ghost Ship Fire in downtown Oakland, where my friend's building burned down and killed four people, where my ex-wife and sons lived up in paradise and they lost These are ruthless Wall Street investors lacking any kind of concern for the people, for the buildings and the neighborhoods they impact. Oh, yeah, it's an albatross. And, you know, moving on to some of the other issues with Pete Bennett, I'll place some information on walnutcreekpolice.com. Let me repeat that. Walnutcreekpolice.com. I haven't had a chance to work on it. Medical problems again. I'm still limping, but nobody seems to care what happened in the library. But I gave you a copy of my family trust that was forged. The person who bought our family apartment in New York City can be found with Ivana Trump. Yeah, thanks very much. 10, 15 years I've been asking for help. There you go.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Next speaker is Radhika.
Good evening. Are you on and unmuted? Welcome.
Hi, good evening, Walnut Creek Council. This is Radhika Srinivasan. I'm with the group that opposes the outsized development at Seven Hills Ranch. Please speak on behalf of the Walnut Creek residents to the County Board of Supervisors to oppose the speaker proposal. You have the power to ensure that any development at Seven Hills conforms to the Walnut Creek standards for tree ridge line and slope ordinances and character that makes Walnut Creek such a unique Bay Area city. It was only after I moved and bought a home here after living all across California that I realized what I liked about Walnut Creek was a deliberate action to integrate open space and urban living. This is critical for health. Please ensure that this continues for future generations. At a time of extreme climate change, to destroy a key habitat with natural carbon sequestration is inexplicable. We also need any development to be consistent with climate-friendly construction. The argument that this development is needed to address affordable housing is not valid, as you've already heard. If the council wants to support affordable housing, they should consider development of the many vacant commercial properties in the area. We already have an extensive community for seniors in Rosemore. We really don't need to destroy a key natural habitat that is so critical for so many people for so many reasons. Please speak for our community and oppose this project with the county supervisors. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker is Doreen Allen.
Hello, my name is Doreen Allen, and I would just like to reiterate what many have already mentioned this evening regarding the Seven Hills project, and ask of the city council, please reevaluate the systemic impacts of this project on the surrounding neighborhoods. Thank you so very much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Next speaker is Diane Young.
Good evening, Mayor Francois and mayors of the city council. My name is Diane Young, and I live in Walnut Creek. Seven Hills Ranch is a lovely property. It is also privately owned and zoned for residential use, not open space, not agriculture, not public parkland. Walnut Creek already has approximately 2,700 acres of open space, among the highest in the state for a city of our size. That's something we can all be proud of. The Seven Hills property is indeed bucolic, but the majority of the trees are highly flammable, non-native eucalyptus and old, spent fruit trees. The existing oaks, about 80 of them, are being honored and protected in this proposed project. We are facing critical housing shortages in our city, region, state, and beyond. Creating, innovating housing for seniors means they will downsize from larger homes, making more suitable housing available for young and growing families. These new families will be scattered throughout the area, putting less pressure on our roads or any one school or district. Building fewer, larger houses, as some have suggested, will generate far more disruption than a quiet senior community. The proposed housing is not duplicative. It offers a continuum of care model that is currently unavailable in our community. Let's not overlook the site's proximity to Kaiser and John Muir hospitals. It's a very short distance to top-notch medical care. That's smart planning. Most importantly, this is unincorporated property within the jurisdiction of Contra Costa County, not the city of Walnut Creek. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Young. I'm not seeing that we have any other speakers, so I'm going to close public comment on public communications and ask my colleagues if they have any questions. I see our city manager has his mic on and can likely provide us an update on the county's processing of the project.
I certainly could do that. The reason I was chiming is I did just want to offer a reminder for the council that we do have Captain Andy Brown from our police department here this evening, who would like to provide an update on some recent issues. And so we may want to do that during or shortly after a public comment.
Yes, thank you.
But while you have your mic on, I know the city of Walnut Creek has been following this project closely, and I wanted to see if you could give an update for the folks here in the chamber tonight as to where we are in the process and what steps the city has taken and what's to come in the future.
Yeah, Dan Buckshai, city manager. You know, as many folks here spoke tonight, this project is in the county, in the unincorporated area outside of the city limits. As such, the purview does rest with the county and ultimately the County Board of Supervisors. That said, when the draft environmental impact report came out, I believe it was in March earlier this year, the city did send a very thorough and extensive letter outlining the city's concerns, many of which were highlighted here. We share many of those concerns, have conveyed those, have met with city staff. I have personally, as have some of our other staff, to share these concerns. We are in a little bit of a wait-and-see as they are processing that feedback, along with, I believe, they received hundreds of letters of feedback relative to the environmental impact, and we are waiting to see what the county does next. My understanding is the next step would be for them to finalize the environmental impact report and then hold hearings at the county planning commission, at which time more information will be available in order to determine where the county is headed and whether or not the concerns that have been highlighted by the city have been addressed or not. So at this point in time, we are waiting for further information from the county as to their next steps and how they will decide to proceed with the project.
And is that comment letter available on our website or is it on the county website?
The comment letter is available on the county website. I've also shared it with some members of the folks who are here this evening, and certainly it's available for anybody who would like a copy.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So in addition to submitting a comment letter, the city met with county staff? Is that correct?
That's correct, to talk through our concerns and to understand the process that the county would be following.
Okay, and there was a comment made that the city had approved a right of way. I don't believe that's correct. Maybe you can speak to that issue?
The city has not approved anything relative to this project.
Okay. And any other questions of the city manager? Do we have an estimate for when the Planning Commission might hold its hearing? The county planning commission?
My understanding is it's dependent upon how many issues are identified in the environmental impact report and when they finalize it. My understanding is it could be as soon as August or September for the county planning commission hearing, or if there are more extensive changes to the environmental impact report, it could be delayed considerably beyond that. But as of now, it could be as soon as August or September.
And I think, as most people know, the Planning Commission then is a recommending body to the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors would have the ultimate responsibility over that land use plan?
That is correct, mayor.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. So it would be a good idea. Let's invite Captain Brown up to speak about some recent updates in the city.
Good evening, mayor. Mayor Protem, city council members, members of the community. My name is Andy Brown. I am the operations division captain here at Walnut Creek PD. Thank you for giving me a chance to talk a little bit about some recent crime trends we've seen here in Walnut Creek and also regionally in the Bay Area. So first, I'll start with, last night, we had a robbery. We call it an armed street robbery. I'll give you some specifics right now, and then I'll talk a little bit more about some other issues as well that we've seen recently. So last night, approximately 10:00 PM, two male suspects followed a resident home from the downtown area after dinner and assaulted the resident at gunpoint while in his driveway. The suspects fled in a dark-colored sedan with the victim's Rolex watch. The resident was treated for minor injuries as a result of the robbery, and officers and detectives are actively investigating the case, and we request members of the public to contact Walnut Creek PD if they have any information regarding the incident. I will add that the resident was having dinner at a restaurant downtown near North Main Street and Civic Drive prior to driving home and being robbed. Now, this is a very serious crime. Whenever we have robberies, those are serious. Robbery, by definition, is taking a property through force or fear. In this case, it was an armed robbery, so they were armed, the two suspects were armed with handguns. And we're seeing this trend in the Bay Area recently. In Walnut Creek alone, we've had four similar incidents of armed robberies involving the loss of a Rolex watch specifically. Others have been high-end jewelry as well. But Walnut Creek is not alone in this. We're seeing this happen in other parts of Contra Costa County, Alameda County, and SF Most recently, we had, there was a similar robbery in Hayward this afternoon. So what do we know and what have we done? We coordinate with our local Bay Area agencies, you know, our law enforcement partners, and share information, collaborate with them, to include Contra Costa County, Alameda County, SF County, and Northern California Regional Intelligence- SF County, and Northern California Regional Intelligence Communication Network, otherwise known as NICRIC. Every case that happens here in Walnut Creek and specific to this type of crime, we actively investigate, and our officers and detectives work together, you know, to pursue every lead, to include, you know, gathering information from witnesses and/or gleaning any information we can from surveillance cameras that are either on businesses or even looking at our traffic cameras to see where the suspect vehicle entered or exited Walnut Creek. We do have leads in our cases, and, you know, so we are actively pursuing those leads, and so I can't share too many details with you right now. Just know that it's an active investigation. With regards to, you know, we don't want to have to be forced to investigate these types of cases, we'd rather prevent and deter them from happening. So in response to the recent robberies in Walnut Creek, we've added additional overtime patrol officers in the downtown area, and these officers do a combination of patrols either on foot, on bicycles, or in vehicles. And we also on occasion have plainclothes detectives that are patrolling downtown to supplement our officers. And we've also communicated with the community through public service announcement regarding the robberies that have been happening, just sort of reminding our citizens that this is out there and also requesting their assistance if they see anything suspicious. And that's really the key here, is if there's something suspicious, we want to be called, okay? And I can't tell you specifically what is suspicious. If you think that it is, that's the time to call us. And we'd rather get the call and respond and not have an issue than to not get the call, and that does turn out to be a situation where someone is robbed in the downtown area or anywhere in Walnut Creek for that matter. So the focus is going to be on crime prevention, it's our ultimate goal, but when crime does occur, we commit considerable resources to solving the crime and bringing those offenders to justice. I could speak further about some of the details, but not too much, because like I said, there's active investigation, but I would open it up to questions from the council.
Thank you, Captain Brown. Any questions of the captain? Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you very much for the report, and I know how concerning this is for the police department, city staff, all of us, and the community. What do you suggest the community does to reduce the likelihood of these kinds of incidents that are personal crimes?
Right. So it's unique, and these crimes are unique in the sense that there's a very clear decision by these criminals to focus on certain high-end jewelry items and high-end watches. So, you know, I'm going to stop short of saying, don't wear your, you know, nice watches and jewelry out, but it's something to consider when you are going out, at least right now, because most likely, there are multiple groups of criminals that are doing this type of crime, based on the number that are happening throughout the region. So I do anticipate in time there'll be arrests, but, you know, in the meantime, it's something to consider. Being aware of your surroundings, being aware of where you're at, you know, parking in a well-lit area, just being cognizant of suspicious people that may be around you, suspicious activity, and if you are concerned, then just, you know, go to a safe place and make a phone call to the police department. Let us do our job, and our job is to keep you all safe.
Thank you.
Councilmember Darling.
Thank you. So if somebody were to be leaving downtown, going to their house, and they're concerned that they're being followed, what would you recommend they do? Turn around and go back to the police station and just call you?
That's exactly what I would recommend they do. They turn around and go to the parking lot right out here at the city hall of the police department and call us.
Thank you.
And if they're on their cellphone, would that be an appropriate use of 911 if they're fearful of kind of what's going on around them?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We would, we want to err on the side of caution and calling us, and then, trust me, it's no problem for us to get out there and we realize, oh, that was a mistake, or there was, you know, a perception issue. We'd rather have that than the alternative.
Okay. Thank you very much, Captain Brown. I'm not seeing any other questions. I appreciate the, we all appreciate the update, we all appreciate the hard work the police department is doing. We have a zero tolerance policy for criminal activity in this city, and we appreciate all the hard work you're doing to keep us all safe.
Thank you for the time.
So with that, we're going to take a 15-minute recess before we move on to our business items on our agenda. Thank you for coming tonight and have a nice evening. Welcome back. Next on our agenda is council member and staff announcements, reports on activities or requests. Closed session announcements, we did have a closed session, and I'll turn to the city attorney for a report out.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council, by a five-to-zero vote this evening, authorized that the city opt out of the national settlement with Monsanto. This is an action that has been taken by the county as well as a number of other cities in Contra Costa County. The council's action does also allow Walnut Creek to join with many other cities in their own independent litigation against Monsanto to recover costs the city will incur to treat PCBs in the groundwater. And that action also includes the retention of the law firm of Sheer Edling to represent the city along with many other cities. It would be on a contingent basis. And with that, that's the report out of closed session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mattis. Next is city manager reports, Mr. Buckshai.
I do not have an update this evening, Mayor.
Okay. Moving right along, the city council member reports on activities, assignments, and various activities and upcoming events. Would anyone, well, council member ask you, let's start with you.
Thank you. You couldn't see the smile under my mask, but I did decide to...
Luella, can you pull your microphone toward you?
I can. I can take my mask off. That'll help, too. I did decide that tonight would be a really great night to brag about all the exciting events that are happening at the Leshur Theater. So far this summer, there's been opera, there's been the Headliner Series, all of which are amazingly perfect in terms of, I don't think, they had a comic, I can't remember anybody's name, but they had a comic last couple of weeks ago, and I don't remember ever laughing that hard. There were tears on my eyes, and when I got home, all my makeup had run. That's how funny that man was. And Linda Bonanti, and just how heartwarming she was, all of the other headliners. And the new Headliner Series is announced, and if you want to know about it, please check on your, on the Leshur Center website. We also have the Bedford Theater, Bedford Gallery there. They have knocked it out of the park for two of their most recent exhibitions. The first one was the one about fleeing people that just happened to fit what was going on in the Ukraine. And the other one is about money, and there are some amazingly beautiful, amazingly political statements in that, well worth the time. Center Rep is coming up with their new season, the symphony. There are just all kinds of things happening, and I do not want you to forget that there is music in the plaza, which even though it's free, has been sold out for the last few things that they have, and I think there are two more to go. They're on Thursday nights at 5:30, and if it's really sunny, I recommend you bring a hat, but it is, there were people dancing around because of the zydeco music, and it just is a great chance to be happy. So please take advantage of these things. We care a lot about that theater, and we really want it to please all of the people of Walnut Creek and our region. On more serious areas, it was pretty transportation-focused for me during the slow time. We had the planning committee where we voted to fund some additional projects, mostly buses, and to fund the accessible transportation pilot program. We reviewed the progress of projects, and we spent, this is on the 680 Innovation Committee that I'm on. We heard from the director of the Houston Tri-Star Amalgamation about their program that they have that is a whole unification of all their transportation facilities over a county and a half of Texas. And they've been building a bazillion things down in Texas. I was there because my son was stationed there for a while, and managing that has to be really, really challenging. Gave us some happiness that we were going to have, we were going to be able to accomplish innovating Highway 680 successfully. The item that I meant to pull from the calendar, the consent calendar, is the fact that CCTA facilitated getting us $239,000 for downtown fiber optics network. We had, I attended on CCTA's behalf, the legislative review at CalCog, which is the statewide group of government people working together to focus on transportation and other issues like that. We also at CCTA have been notified that we have received a grant to help funding for the Bus on Shoulder program that is part of Innovate 680. And, let's see, there is one other thing. Ruth Bancroft now has an official, Ruth Bancroft Garden now has an official sign. It is worth driving by so that you know that you never will drive by the entrance of Ruth Bancroft again. So congratulations to them.
You had an A-bag meeting, too, didn't you?
Yeah, I had an A-bag meeting, but it was so long ago, I don't remember what it was about.
Fair enough. Councilmember, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I attended the Walnut Creek Downtown Uncorked, seems like a long time ago now, but that was a fabulous event. I hadn't heard, I'd seen some of the promotions on that through WCD, but it really didn't do justice to the actual event that it was, which essentially was a wine tasting throughout downtown and going through a variety of different shops, and it really was a, we've had, feels like we've had several reopenings in Walnut Creek since COVID, and this absolutely was one. Retail shops I hadn't gone into before, there were primarily retail, but a lot of other little different stores as well, and there were so many people. It was just terrific to see everybody out and about and congregating, and it was a beautiful warm evening. So I'm going to promote the heck out of that next year because I just thought it was terrific. Something that didn't make me feel as hopeful was a meeting that I had shortly after that with the Cal Water Agencies. So buckle up, it's going to be a rough year. Warmer winters mean less spring runoff. Now, we had that great, oh my gosh, that great December and November of rain, and then, of course, it's pretty much ended after January 5th. But the problem is that our reservoirs are designed for spring runoff, and so if we don't get those heavier winters of rain that comes then, and we don't have the snowpack, that's a real problem for our reservoirs, even if it looks like we've gotten almost as much rain in total. So that's a big problem. And we've already seen the governor, as well as the water agencies, encouraging homes to stop watering lawns, and so that's continuing to be something that we're hearing more and more about. I think it's going to get more serious as we get closer, longer into the summer here. There'll probably be some requirements that are coming up from that as well. Shockingly, water usage is up over the last two years, even though we have been in a drought and we've been hearing from the governor and other agencies that we need to stop even though there aren't these requirements, water is somehow up in that usage. So that's the opposite of what we need to do. And again, there's going to be some more serious discussions on that one. And we need to really encourage every city in the state to invest in recyclable water. It has to be done. I was told by the president of the Contra Costa Water District, we just got together over a social event a couple of weeks ago, and he said, "We've got enough water for one more year before there are some serious issues that it will change how we get our water and how we're able to use our water." We have one year. We need absolutely a wet winter, and if we don't get it, the conversation next year at this time is going to be very different. So there's not much we can do about that, but we can help to conserve. So on that happy note, I represented Walnut Creek at the Clayton Pride Parade a few weeks ago, and that was great. They had, wow, there were so many people in that parade, I was wondering if we were going to have more people in the parade than actually watching the parade. But Clayton did a great job, and they're trying to get every city that's in central Contra Costa to participate, and I hope they do, and that's something that I would love to see more cities adopt as well. Also, attended the employee appreciation event at Shadlands. I know the mayor was there. I think, Luella, I saw you there, too. I don't know if my other council colleagues were there, but it was at the sports mall. What I loved about it is that the sports mall had an open house for all the sports groups that were there, and so people that have seen that built and they're wondering what's going on there, this was a total open house. You could actually have hands-on experience with all of these different sports that are within the sports mall. Think of a big mall, and this is just sports. That's exactly what it is. And then the Bedford Gallery opening on cultural currency was a couple of weeks ago, and I have a Bitcoin collection that from when I was a kid, I got to find that again now. So I love these kind of things where it's different art with currency, and they have things like ladders that are using welded pennies together. It's a terrific show, and I encourage everyone to see it. And then lastly, it's just a personal note. I had a challenging week this last week where my father passed away, and I just want to thank my council colleagues and the city manager for coming to the memorial ceremony yesterday. That meant a lot to me, meant a lot to my mother and my family, and my mother mentioned it again a couple of times today. So I just want to thank you all.
You bet, and our deepest condolences to you and your family, Kevin. Councilmember Darling.
So from what I remember, I did finish up the East Bay Med Water Academy. We went out and talked about one of their local reservoirs over in the Oakland Hills, and then we spent some time talking about their efforts on equity and inclusion, and they have some great programs, one of which they have, if they have any employee that wants to seek a higher job, they'll advance to them the money to go to college to get that job, and they've had several of their employees just drew tremendously well, you know, going from basic maintenance worker up to heading a division. I did take the opportunity to, since their equity and inclusion people were there, to talk to them about some of the new projects that we're looking at here in Walnut Creek, including small, tiny home projects, and how they can improve, how they can work with them to make water connections more affordable, and it turns out they have a pilot project. So I've put them in touch with Hope Solutions so that hopefully they can work out a deal. The homeless task force, Linda's already plugged this, but it is on the 26th. It is our somewhat gruff, but yet very... It is our somewhat gruff, but yet very effective Sergeant Silva talking about the hop team. I've gone out with Sergeant Silva and it's just amazing. The man has been working the homeless beat for quite some time. And he said, what do you want to see? And I said, well, where do the homeless people live? And it was like he was going to their houses. He's like, okay, so-and-so lives underneath this bridge. We'll go check in and see if he needs some socks or some water or anything like that. So it should be a really good forum. If anybody's interested, make sure you sign up and/or come down here to City Hall on the 26th. And then we're getting into Sustainability Action Plan mode. We've started getting briefings from staff on what's coming. And then this morning, I went to the East Bay Leadership Conference, has a Water Environment Task Force. And they had the county folks who are working on both their general plan and their update to their Sustainability Action Plan, talk about what they're doing. And I'm looking for great ways that we can work with the counties and the other cities in the area on some of the thornier issues related to electrification of houses and things like that. So that's coming up. And that's what I've been doing, that I remember doing.
Excellent. Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things that have occurred over the last few weeks. As the representative or liaison from the City Council to the Rossmore Golden Rain Foundation, I attended their meeting at the end of June. And pleased to report that, and I don't think I reported this to the council before, that the Contra Costa Fire received the $3.1 million grant from CalFire that will allow for the removal or defore, not deforesting, but some clearing of about 14 acres of land that runs between Lafayette and Rossmore. And it will improve and reduce the likelihood of fire and also reduce the likelihood of the greenhouse gas emissions, the carbon that results when you actually burn timber. So that is great news for them. Recent board meeting of Recycle Smart, we have initiated the search and recruitment for a new executive director because our executive director, Ken Etherington, retired as of July 8th. He was a great member of the team. We'd had him for eight years, and we wish him well in the future. Our ad hoc committee, Councilmember Darling and I are on the ad hoc committee, negotiating terms of a development agreement with Toyota Walnut Creek regarding the redevelopment or expansion and changes that they're proposing to their properties, not to eliminate the dealership, but to repurpose some of the land for different uses. I serve on the Board of the League of California Cities. We had our fourth board meeting of the year this last week. Two items that I think would be of interest to council members on the public. One is in the final budget numbers that were signed by the state in June, included in that is $180 million that will be available to local governments for grants in the arena of organic waste reduction and the organic waste regulations. And this is good news. Many of the cities are unlike ours. There are many cities in the state of California that have been using only two bins. And they have to get all the way to three bins, including a green bin, very quickly. So these grant funds are very, very important to get all of these regulations moving forward across the state. In addition, the Cal Cities Board took positions on the, oh my gosh, haven't you already seen the commercials? The two gaming propositions that are coming before the voters in November. Proposition 26 and Proposition 27. They're a bit confusing, but they're basically, basically about increasing gaming in the state of California. And the League of California Cities took a position to take no position on Proposition 26, in part because we have cities in California that have casinos, Indian casinos. And we have cities in California who have card rooms. And so basically you can't pick which child to favor. Would be my paraphrasing of it. We also, for Prop 27, which is about online gaming from big entities, the, we took a position of no. And so you may see that in being used in advertisements by the no on Prop 27. They're proponents of no, I guess, so that they are the opponents. Community Service Day is well underway. It'll be Saturday, October 8th. We have 40-plus projects that we are going to have, including Food Drive again. Thanks to Walnut Creek Rotary, they're stepping up to help us run pop-up food collection stations in front of our seven grocery stores, thanks to them. And also in Rossmore, there will be a drive-through collection station that's run by the Rossmore Rotary. So thanks to those groups. And stay tuned for signups. We'll start four projects in the middle of August. I want to thank my colleague Luella for announcing all of the wonderful things happening at the Leisure Center. It's a jewel of Walnut Creek. The arts are so important. And I want to mention that Arts Around August is slated for August. And check out our website, as well as all sorts of partners in the community that are involved in that. And I want to give a shout out. They won't hear this shout out because they're playing right now. Shout out to the Walnut Creek Concert Band, who did a wonderful Fourth of July concert in Civic Park. And tonight is their annual Summer Pops concert. And it would be really fun to be there. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Appreciate all you're doing for, for me and the community. I also serve on the Recycle Smart Board. Mayor Protem gave a good update there. We're in the process of recruiting for a new executive director. So I'm on the ad hoc committee along with three other attorneys and one non-attorney. So we try not to get too detailed on the employment contract. But we're encouraged and excited. I think we have a good recruiter and hope to get some good candidates in in the next few months and start the interview process there. As the Mayor Protem noted, state law did make organic waste recycling mandatory as of January 1st this year. Our agency was well positioned and had taken steps to implement that, that law. And so I'm proud of that. And several of our community members, including my household, have been doing the organic recycling for years now. And it's pretty easy. And the goal is as less as you can in the black can and as much as you can in the blue can or the green can. So we all need to, that's our new future. And it's pretty easy to do and encourage everyone to, to get on board there. I did attend the Made in the Shade Festival at Shadelands that was sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. That was a great event. There were over 2,000 people in attendance, some local breweries there, a lot of pop-ups. And it was just, it was my first opportunity to walk through the sports mall, which is the former Contra Costa Times Publishing Plant. So talk about an adaptive reuse of a building that they've really transformed with a high-end soccer training facility where people come from Europe to train, basketball facility, and then kind of everything in between. Taekwondo, swimming, volleyball, baseball. It was, it was very impressive and it was a lot of fun. What was, what I'm, and yoga. Yes, and Encore Gymnastics just opened a new building immediately next door. That event also featured a salute to public service. So Lieutenant Olson from the Police Department was there. And it was nice to see PD get recognition at the event. Let's see, I did attend the July 4th celebration in Civic Park. And it was fun to, to be at the concert. It was free to the public. The Walnut Creek Concert Band did a great job as always. And they allowed me to embarrass myself and conduct Stars and Stripes Forever, which I have to admit, I, I had never played a musical instrument, but I had a pretty good time doing that. And Tom Silva got me on camera. So that, that even added to the enjoyment. I attended the Mayor's Conference and we had an update from Clifford Chan, who's the general manager of East Bay Mud. And similar to comments that some of my colleagues have said tonight, obviously we're in a stage two drought. It's a serious situation. East Bay, the Walnut Creek is served by two water districts, Contra Costa Water District and, and East Bay Mud. East Bay Mud has a mandatory 10% water use reduction. And just so people know, it's not, if you've already been doing your part in conserving water, you don't have to do more than you were doing before. It's an average across the whole district that they're trying to achieve that 10% reduction. Keep up the good work if you're already conserving water. Some of the tips that he gave us were don't water more than three times a week. Water before nine or after six. If you're going to use a decorative fountain, make it recycling, one that uses, recirculates the water. Don't wash hardscape, of course, and have a hose shut off to wash your car. Also pointed out, there are rebates available for lawn conversions, smart irrigation controllers and high-efficiency nozzles. Along with Councilmember Wilk, I serve on the city's DEI Task Force. We met last week. We reviewed our mission and vision statements, and we're close to finalizing those. We also had a very productive workshop where we identified and prioritized action strategies and initiatives that the task force would recommend to the city council. Some more immediate, some a little bit longer term, things like a landing page on the city's website. More advocacy and promotion of cultural events, training for city officials and employees, many of which is already underway. And then this will ultimately culminate in a, a set of recommendations for the city council, likely by mid next year. And finally, I wanted to point out that this Sunday, the Community Cleanup Crew that is led by Karen Mariner and a bunch of great volunteers throughout the city and this community really, is having a community cleanup in downtown Walnut Creek from 8:30 a.m. to about 10 a.m. We'll meet at the top of the Macy's parking lot at Broadway Plaza. You have three hours parking. It'll be no problem. We'll be done within that amount of time. And I promise to bring donuts and coffee and also clean up. So I'm looking forward to that. And with that, I think we're done with our, our council reports. So we'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a consideration item. Consideration of a resolution establishing November 8th, 2022, as the election date to consider an ordinance imposing a one-half percent transaction and use tax for a period of 10 years and submitting that ordinance to the voters at this election. It's also requesting that the Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors consent to the consolidation of this election with the statewide general election to be held on that same date, directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis and specifying procedures and processes related to the ballot arguments. At this time, I invite City Manager Dan Buckshai to provide the staff presentation.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I have the privilege of providing tonight's update. And this is a substantial issue for your council this evening, a significant decision in order to provide some feedback on how to proceed relative to potentially placing a sales tax measure on the ballot for this November. And the reason for this process this evening is that unlike many other states, in California, local governments do not have the ability to impose a tax on constituents. In California, local governments, the process entails local governments asking the voters if they would like to tax themselves. So that really is the question before your council this evening. If you would like to put this to the voters, should you decide to do that? We'd like to receive some direction related to writing the impartial analysis, as well as the arguments in favor and potentially rebuttals to any other arguments. So those are the key questions before your council this evening. I'm going to run through a little bit of background about what we've been doing for many, many years on this topic and what the next steps are. So as many of you know better than I, because you've been here longer than I have, is that it's been over a decade since the city council first began discussing the idea of pursuing additional revenue to help provide for the many needs and wants in the community and ultimately to continue to help support the high quality of life in Walnut Creek that our residents enjoy. More recently, meaning the last few years, your council has dug in in more detail, really looking at the state of our infrastructure, our programs and services. And even though we are in sound financial shape, meaning we have a solid foundation, at the end of the day, we are, we're healthy but not wealthy, which means that, that while we have resources, the needs are outpacing our resources in order to be able to help provide for that high quality of life. Hence the situation that we are in currently. Over really the last couple of years, your council has evaluated numerous options for how to fund the programs and services and facilities that we have here in Walnut Creek. The first several you can see here do not entail a tax increase. Looking at, could we make do with our existing budget to meet current and future needs? Relying on new development to contribute for these projects, grants, fundraising, public-private partnerships. And ultimately, it's been determined that not enough revenue could be generated to support the needs in the community, again, for the quality of life that people have grown to expect here in Walnut Creek. So with that in mind, a while back, your council directed that staff evaluate various tax options, including, as you can see here, a transient occupancy tax, which is a hotel tax. When you check into a hotel and you see the additional fees, that's what that is, more commonly known as the TOT. The sales and use tax, which we'll speak to in more detail in just a moment. The utility users tax, parcel and, and general obligation bonds were all evaluated. And ultimately, your council gave direction to further pursue and look into a sales tax. And there are numerous reasons for that. One is that it would provide, you know, funding that would better meet the needs that are out there currently. Secondly, is it provides for flexibility in that both programs and services and infrastructure and facility, facilities can be funded with a sales tax, whereas other types of general obligation bonds or other types of taxes are more restrictive and may only be able to be used for certain types of infrastructure or facilities and not be allowed to be used for programs and services. And in addition, as we've seen here, some of these other types of taxes that are more restrictive, that don't allow for flexibility, don't allow organizations to adjust for things such as pandemics. And if you're locked into a spending plan and something unknown comes up, you're not able to adjust. And so we think, given all of the unknowns that have occurred the last couple of years, having that flexibility is critical. In addition, a sales tax spreads out the cost over a broader base than some of these other taxes. And what I mean by that is Walnut Creek is a regional destination. We have a large number of visitors that come to Walnut Creek, whether it's to use our parks, hike in our open space, visit our many shops or restaurants, drive on our streets, as we heard earlier, in some instances necessitate the need for police response. And so the thought is if folks are visiting Walnut Creek and utilizing and benefiting those services, they should help pay for it. And a sales tax does just that. Roughly half of the tax generated through a sales tax is generated by people outside of Walnut Creek. Whereas some of these other types of measures, the burden would fall exclusively on Walnut Creek residents and even in other cases, only on homeowners within Walnut Creek. So the sales tax is much more broad in, in nature. Additionally, we looked at a sales tax in Walnut Creek compared to other surrounding cities. The thought being if Walnut Creek were to increase our tax rate, might others be inclined to go somewhere else in order to save some money? That seems very unlikely because Walnut Creek's rate is currently the lowest in the region. And even with a potential half-cent increase, we would still be in the lowest third. And our nearby cities would still be either a half-cent or in some cases, more than a full cent higher than where we would be even with this additional increase. So it seems unlikely that others would be traveling elsewhere to find a lower rate. And then in addition, in terms of impact, what we're looking at on average, and these numbers vary a bit, but the, the average cost to a household, about $10 a month is what the impact would be. So a couple of Starbucks a month would be the, the equivalent cost. So after your council narrowed the field to a sales tax, you effectively directed all of us to get out there in the community and listen. What is on the minds of our residents, of our businesses, our property owners and visitors as well and key constituents? So we started with that by doing a very formal poll in January of 2022. Those results were shared with your council and the public in February of this year. And then in addition, we held numerous one-on-one meetings to really listen to folks. Your council collectively met with, believe, close to 200 individuals in the community. I gave over 30 presentations to 50 community groups. And in total, I think collectively, you know, we heard from over about 700 people directly in the community. Because we are, or there are only six of us and we can't, we can't speak to all 70,000 residents one-on-one, we did also do a mail survey, online survey, sent out to, to folks throughout the city, sent to over 40,000 individuals and households, as I recall. And ultimately, we received about 5,000 responses. So through all of that, listening, we So through all of that, listening, we narrowed down what is, what is on folks' minds and what's important. And that's really what you can see here. You know, overall, generally, folks think that Walnut Creek's on the right track and that the city is headed in a good direction, that people do really value the programs and services, and again, the quality of life here in Walnut Creek. More specifically, you can see the areas that really resonated, public safety, disaster preparedness, obviously, you know, fires on everybody's mind, that we're talking about droughts, we're always thinking about earthquakes, obviously COVID-19 and recovering from that, both economically, socially, and to sure we do so in a healthy manner. People love our parks, our open space, our walkways, our ballfields, and want to see those not only maintained but enhanced in the future. City facilities are important. Many of our key facilities are 50 years old, and in short, they've been loved to death and are wearing out, and it's only a matter of time before they'll be unusable. So we really need to do some, make some investments in those key facilities so they'll be here not only in the near term, but for several generations down the road, just like folks today have benefited from some of those decisions that were made back over 50, 60 years ago. Homelessness sadly continues to be a challenge in Walnut Creek, the Bay Area, and throughout California, and generally speaking, worsened throughout the pandemic. Your council used some short-term funding from the federal government to help supplement our efforts related to homelessness, but that money will run out soon, and we really want to continue to address this issue with the goal of getting folks help and off the street to be self-supportive and into homes. We provide many programs through our arts and recreation department and our other departments, not only to seniors and youth. You'll see those two demographics highlighted here, because on average, we are older than average in Walnut Creek, and therefore, we have a lot of seniors that utilize our programs. And we also partner with many of our schools to provide after-school youth programs. And right now, our beloved summer programs and camps are underway, in which we bring on several hundred temporary employees to help provide for those camps and programs as we're in the dog days of summer here, and those will be wrapping up over the next few weeks. And then, you know, absolutely critical as well is supporting our local economy and our local businesses. We know that Walnut Creek is a job center, it's a destination, and folks are, think that's critical and are proud of that, that Walnut Creek, that people want to be here and we want to support a healthy business community, because we know that's healthy for the organization overall. So through all of that, what we have before your council this evening for consideration is a ballot question that would ultimately go to the voters, should your council decide to move forward on that. I'm not going to read through all of this. You can see the top part with all the bullet points hits on those key areas that I just mentioned. It's not coincidence, it's very intentional, because that's what we heard from the community. But I will read the bottom part there that says, "Shall the city of Walnut Creek levy a half-cent sales tax, providing approximately $11 million annually for 10 years, requiring annual independent audits, citizens oversight, and all funds benefiting Walnut Creek?" And so if your council should decide to move forward, this is the ultimate question that would be put to the voters. In terms of next steps, key deadline, August 12th is the timeframe in which your council has to make this decision, in which our city clerk needs to transmit the information to the Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors and the county clerk that actually administers the election process. We'd need direction from your council to direct the city attorney to submit an impartial analysis and direction about the creation and submittal of primary arguments relative to the ballot measure. And then, of course, election day would be November 8th. So that is a very summarized version of what has been a tremendous amount of work, not only over many years, but especially over the last six months by all of you and many city staff to get us to this point this evening. So you can see the recommended actions, and with that, I'd be happy to entertain any questions your council may have.
Thank you very much, City Manager. Any questions of Mr. Buckshai? Councilmember Wilk.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dan, for that explanation. I've got, I've got a couple of questions here. One is on, we're seeing that online sales have really increased and continue to increase dramatically each and every year. COVID certainly increased that as well. I, we continue to hear that there is a disparity between what the sales tax revenue that's garnered in Walnut Creek or any really city, when it's in person in the store versus online. Could you describe the difference?
Yes, and you're absolutely correct. It is a key issue that's important, not only here in Walnut Creek, but to cities throughout the state. In short, when a sale that would have been made in person, let's call it a brick-and-mortar store, say, about any shopping center within the city limits, if that is instead purchased online, in most instances, while there are a few exceptions, the city only receives 15% of what it would have received otherwise. And this is a really significant issue for many cities. There's actually a group of city managers throughout the state, I'm one of them, that are working together to evaluate this situation, to ultimately make some recommendations on potential reforms. But I can share with you, it's a very controversial issue, as there are folks, I shouldn't say folks, but some cities that benefit from this current arrangement who would not want that to change, but that is a significant issue indeed.
What are the kind of cities that would not want that to change?
Well, I would presume it would be the cities that have distribution centers in which online goods are shipped to as they receive that other 85% that they would not otherwise receive if it was purchased in person. But I can't speak for all of those cities, but I presume that's who it would be.
So, so the existing sales tax revenue, when we hear that, well, people are purchasing and they're going to continue to purchase, the likelihood of continued increase in online sales, which is where we're seeing so many, so many stores and retail going to, could actually still be potentially detrimental down the line to Walnut Creek?
Yeah, I do think the long-term trend in that regard is, is not positive, even though we do have a sound economic base here and sales tax is an important insignificant portion of our budget at longer term that is risked. And I would highlight, one of the facets and considerations relative to this additional half percent is that those online sales would stay here locally. They're not subject to that reallocation process, similar to the other sales taxes that are currently in place.
Okay, that's good to know. The other question I had refers to the $10 a month that would potentially cost households extra. So I just want to confirm my math on this, because I was not a math major and for good reason. That would require an additional $2,000 of purchasing by a household in one month of sales taxable items. Is that correct? So a half-percent sales tax of $2,000, that equals $10.
That is correct. And so when you mention what those taxable purchases would be, and I think where your, the point of your question is that would exclude things like housing costs, rent, or mortgage payments, property taxes, it excludes groceries, it excludes healthcare costs, insurance, or prescriptions, and it also excludes effectively all services. So it really is tangible goods that are subject to the sales tax that would have to roughly equate to $2,000 a month to get to that $10 incremental cost.
Which seems like a lot. I mean, it sounds like it's average, so that probably includes auto sales as a whole to average it down to the household, because I'm just, now, again, we may not be an average household, but $2,000 a month in purchases for taxable items seems like a lot to me. So unless I bought a car.
Your numbers are accurate.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilk. Any other questions? The City Manager, Councilmember Darling?
I just had one quick question. Looking through, the ordinance lays out when the tax would start to be charged. It wouldn't start the day after the election. When would people start to see the extra half-cent sales tax show up at the cash register?
Yeah, I believe it would be in early 2023, and I believe we would see the first remittances, remittances of those, I believe it's in March or April of 2023.
Okay, and then, then the question came up, if we are starting to collect sales tax, do we have the ability to use that sales tax to begin to construct facilities in advance of receiving the sales tax?
Yeah, one of the things that would be under consideration if this were to move forward and to pass, given that there are some facilities that are of interest and other infrastructure to upgrade or replace, would we want to do some shorter or midterm borrowing, pledge some of those funds to have that, that loan available so we could get moving on those projects sooner than later?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Buckshai?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silva.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much, Dan. I really appreciate the level of detail, not only in the survey and the gathering of input from the public over the last six or seven months, but also then laying it out in both the ordinance, which will be what is approved by the voters, as well as the resolution and the recitals that really outline all of the input we've received, as well as all of the fiscal realities, the history of taxes, taxes in Walnut Creek, et cetera. One of the things that the ordinance specifies, and I think that it also does in the recitals in the resolution as well, is that in order to give the public some confidence that we are spending the money the way we have appropriately said, although there's a broad range of things we could spend it on, that we are doing the right thing with the money. And it says that it would establish an independent citizen oversight committee that would review and report to the city council, and then there'd be an annual audit as well. Can you elaborate a little on that? And then I have a further question.
Yes, the intention, if this were to, if you were to vote this evening to move forward this, with this, one of the things we'd begin working on with your council is the composition of that oversight committee and defining those roles more clearly. But, you know, the general intent is that we have somebody other than government folks looking at the money that's coming in from this tax measure and how it's spent, and ensuring, one, absolutely, that it's being done legally, which we would fully anticipate it would be, and also that it's being spent in accordance with the direction that your council provides for how it should be spent.
So in relation to that, one of the things, I have served on a citizen's oversight committee for the Ocalanas Union High School District, and what was always much easier on that was when you could basically see the path of the revenues and the expenditures very clearly. Are we able to do that? Could we add language such as that to the ordinance and the recitals and the resolution? So that's a question for you and a question for the attorney.
Yeah, certainly, our attorney could chime in, but I think I could answer it a yes to both, in that our intent would be just to that, that we'd have a tracking mechanism in place so we could track where, how every one of these dollars is spent.
Okay. Another question I had, there, we have received federal stimulus money, post-pandemic recovery money, really, to the tune of $8 million, $8.1 million. I can't remember the exact amount, you probably know it down to the penny. Now, we have been using those funds for a range of services, some public safety needs, some library hours, but that is one-time funding, and we have been using it in a post-pandemic operating arena. How long do we have those funds and what restrictions are those? Could we use those in perpetuity? Can you address that question?
As you noted, we did receive, let's call it $8 million, from the federal government, from stimulus funds, exactly that. And those were used on an emergent basis. You know, those were used to help support some of the things you see downtown with the parklets that are in the parking spaces to offset that loss of parking revenue that's generated, that's reinvested in downtown. We used some of it to support a grant program for local restaurants back in 2021. As you noted, we used it to help support homeless services, library hours, public safety, and to help just plug some of the budget gaps that surfaced as a result of revenues plummeting, especially earlier on in the pandemic. So most of that money has been accounted for and used, and I think candidly, quite wisely, after a considerable vetting by your council about what to do with it. It has to be fully allocated by 2024 and fully spent by 2026, per current regulations from the federal government.
So even if we, and, correct me if I'm wrong, but we couldn't allocate it and fund and use it over a 10-year period going out if we had that kind of money, because we have to use it by 2026 under the current federal guidelines?
That's correct.
Rules, not guidelines.
That's correct.
All right. Would it be appropriate, and I'll ask the attorney or you, to actually mention that in the recitals as well as in the ordinance, because we talk about the Great Recession in here and what happened during the pandemic and the $15 million impact? And so it might be good for the public to understand that those funds are going to be used and can't, or given back when the deadline comes up. I'm sure we're going to find a way to use them.
Yeah. Yeah, so the documents that are before you this evening, the resolution as well as the ordinance, you know, those are our staff recommendations. Your council always, under your purview, has the option to modify those as you deem appropriate, if there are things you would like to clarify or change in some way.
My last, the ordinance and the resolution are basically companion pieces. The language is very similar. If we find some places where the language might have been inadvertently inconsistent, can we get those cleaned up so that there's a single message that's consistent between the ordinance and the resolution and the recitals?
Yes, the council can. And as you, they are intended to operate together, and if the council wishes to make some modifications to either the recitals in the resolution or the findings in the ordinance, that would be permissible as well, too.
And in the same vein, there is a wonderful, basically, the ordinance and the recitals in the resolution really reiterate what we heard from the public during the six or seven months process. And the question that is proposed for the ballot is much shorter. If we wanted to find a little bit of, and I know there's a legal requirement of 75 words for the ballot question, perhaps we might have a discussion afterward on how to re, not reframe, but really, if there might be a little tweak here and there needed to be sure that we are best reflecting the input we received from the public?
Yes, the council can make modifications to that based on the council's desire, the information that you've gathered through the community surveys. As you note, the 75-word limit, which is a hard limit under state law, and so the council can make changes if you desire.
Okay. I think those are my questions, Mayor. Thank you.
Hey, I had a few questions as well, break, break report, and obviously, we've been talking about this issue for two years now, not necessarily a revenue measure, but certainly some of the things that have been funded with the revenue measure for years.
Thank you.
Can I start over?
So we've been talking about some of the issues that could potentially be funded by revenue measure for years, if not a decade, in the case of some facilities. And so I think we've, we have a good sense of kind of what the issues are, but just to get down a little bit into the details, then, you mentioned that even with this increase, Walnut Creek would still be among the lowest taxing agencies in the county. So for instance, on, I'm thinking of other cities that have major retail that are with taxable goods or gas, things like that, Pleasant Hill, Concord, would this, would the rate be comparable to the tax rates there?
Yeah, so if, so let me clarify. So currently Walnut Creek sales tax is at eight and three-quarter percent, which is the regional minimum. And I do want to clarify, of that eight and three-quarter percent, the city only receives 1% of that. The remainder goes to the state or to other regional entities. So looking nearby, if we were to go to nine and a quarter, we would be on par with Pleasant Hill and still below Concord, Martinez, Herenda, and a few others that are at nine and three-quarter. El Cerrito, by example, I believe, is 10 and a quarter, 10 and a half. So they're at the high end, and we would still be in the lower, lower tier of our nearby cities.
Okay, and then the Mayor Protem asked about the ARPA funds, which were one-time federal stimulus funds that this council had authorized a hiring of additional police officers and security measures for in response to the Nordstrom smash and grab and other incidents of organized retail theft. But that's just one-time funding, and something like a local sales tax measure would be more continual and ongoing?
That is correct. So, you know, the, we generally have a practice, I shouldn't say generally have a practice, we do have a well-established practice in this city of using one-time funds for one-time expenditures. Some exceptions were made to this because of the nature of the emergency with the pandemic and receiving the emerg- and receiving the emergency funds to deal with the emergency. And so, we did use some of those short-term, one-time funds to fund some of these immediate emergent needs, particularly related to public safety and some of the other items I mentioned. So, you know, if we were to not proceed, or if this tax did not pass, we'd have some difficult decisions to make here in a year or two about what to do with that additional police beat, given the additional cost associated with it.
Yeah.
That would also be true for the extended library hours for support for downtown business and business generally across the community. It would range sustainability initiatives, arts programs, youth and seniors. I mean, it just runs down the litany of where the tough choices would have to be made.
That's correct.
So, just getting a little more in details, too, you said, on average, $10 a month for an average family would be the additional cost. So, for a hundred-dollar purchase, what is that? What would this, what would the extra tax burden be?
You said for a hundred-dollar purchase? I believe that's five cents.
Fifty cents.
Fifty cents, sorry.
Okay.
That's okay.
Staff's really going to chuckle at that, because I'm normally pretty good at math in my head, so they're going to really enjoy that one, just so you know.
And then, let's see, on the one item, and maybe you addressed it, I know it was addressed in the staff report, but if this were, first of all, the council would have to vote to put this on the ballot, then the voters would have to approve it by at least a majority vote. And would there be a sunset date or clause? Would this go on forever, or would there be a termination date?
This, the proposed tax would be in existence for 10 years.
Okay.
And so, for it to be continued beyond that, the voters would have to approve another tax or a replacement tax.
That's helpful. Yeah, Mayor Protem Silva.
So, we've talked about the $10, and you've used the phrase average household, household in Walnut Creek. What is that average household? Is it a two-income earner? It used to be our average household income in Walnut Creek was, maybe with 2015, Department of Finance calculations, was about $90,000 for a household. What are you using as the basis here?
Yes, those numbers are, you know, a little higher than that. We're above the $100,000 mark at this point in time. If you look at more recent numbers, I think it's in around the 115,000, give or take, for average household.
So, the 94595 ZIP code, it actually has a disparately lower average household income because of the Rossmore community, which is on fixed retirement incomes, and your passive income isn't counted by your Census Department in those calculations. Do we know what, but so, a single, how, a single-person household of retirement age is probably less than 110,000?
You know, I don't have the specific demographics by the various regions of the city off the top of my head, but that's certainly something we could look into further.
Maybe the other way I should ask it is, if your average household income is only 50,000, then it's not $10, it's probably $5, or maybe even less, because you're probably having fewer dinners out during a month.
It's most likely considerable, yes, or less, correct.
Thank you.
And maybe just to close the loop on that, what, what items are taxable generally, and which items are exempt from sales tax?
You know, it's generally tangible goods that are taxable, services, vast majority of services are not taxable, some exceptions to the tangible goods, some I mentioned earlier, groceries, prescriptions, medical costs are exempt. For lower-income folks, anything with what used to be called food stamps, those purchases are exempt from the sales tax. So, those are the big-ticket items that would be exempt for tangible goods, and as I mentioned, services are exempt as well.
Mortgage and rent, we don't pay tax, sales tax on those.
That's correct.
I would not be representing our community well if I didn't ask, what about medicinal marijuana?
Well, that, that depends. So, medicinal marijuana would, would not be taxable. Adult-use recreational is taxable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions of staff? I'm not seeing any, so we will go ahead and open this item for public comment. If you're joining us by Zoom, now would be the time to raise your hand or press star nine if you're connected by audio only. Each member of the public will have two minutes to make public comments, and I would invite anyone here in the audience, we'll hear from you first, and welcome, and please join us at the lectern.
All right, well, good evening, council members. Good evening, council members. My name is Susan Hildreth from Walnut Creek, and I am a resident of Rossmore. And we heard a lot of interesting facts about Rossmore in the previous testimony, how quiet it is, no traffic, which is not true. And also, it is a community, though, on a fixed income, but I do think many of us would want to see the benefits that would come from the sales tax. So, also, during my career, I've worked as a public employee at the local, state, and federal level, and as a library administrator. I appreciate the research and the surveys that have been completed by city staff on this, on this issue. We've heard a great presentation this evening, and I'm personally very interested in the public safety, disaster preparedness, and keeping programs and services in place, particularly those library hours. You know, I see that this city and the city council has been very responsible caretakers of our city finances. You have a balanced budget, no general fund debt, healthy reserve funds, and the savings for pension liabilities is very important to me as a public employee. So, you've done a great job managing our assets. And I also understand that city revenue is not likely to increase as much as it has in the past. So, I believe the proposed half-cent sales tax is a reasonable solution to address the needs of the city. Now, we've had a lot of discussion about the cost per month, and I loved Councilmember Wilk's math on that. So, I was going to say $10 isn't that much, but it might even be less than $10 a month, particularly for a single-family household like mine. But, but it's essential to understand that groceries and prescriptions would not be taxed, particularly for our Rossmore residents. So, I think the cost is reasonable, considering the benefit we would have. And I think another important factor for me is that from the 11 to 13 million dollars that might be raised every year from the tax, approximately half of that will come from non-city residents who spend money here. So, I urge you to please approve this and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hildreth.
Good evening. My name is Marsha McLean, and I also am a resident of Rossmore, and I'm here to speak in favor of this. And part of it has to do with, talk about quality of life and about, my parents lived here in the 80s, and Walnut Creek was really nothing like it is today. And when my husband and I decided that we wanted to move here, we weren't really sure. So, we came back from looking someplace, and we sat downtown and had coffee, and we said, wow, this is the wonderful place to be. And particularly, as we get older, it was wonderful to see all the people going on. And then we moved to Rossmore. And so, I think, excuse me, so I think that most of the thing that you've talked about, I'm very impressed with what you've done. I think that you've worked very, very hard to come up with an idea that makes sense. I am also part of the area coordinator for Walnut Creek CERT for Rossmore, and so, safety preparedness is important, but also the quality of life and the fact that, that the small amount of tax that you're going to be including is, is very, very important. I also agree with Susan that you've done a fabulous job, and so, for us to be able to sell it to the Walnut, to the Rossmore people is that 50% of that tax comes from people coming into the city, and I think that that makes a very, very big difference. And I think that, and I really don't have much more to say, except that I think it's really a great idea, and we'll work very hard to help it help us. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLean.
Hi, I'm Rob Stankas from Walnut Creek. Kind of want to approach this from a personal standpoint. So, I, my daughters were born here in Walnut Creek. We've lived here for 25 years, and have really had the benefit of all of the great things that make Walnut Creek a quality-of-life kind of place to be. And I think our main reason for supporting this is that we believe strongly in the idea of paying it forward, that we've benefited from some great decisions that somebody made many years before us. In fact, my wife has lived here for nearly 50 years, and she laughs sometimes that so many of the facilities that are here are the same ones that were here when she was a child, you know? And so, we have a strong belief in wanting to pay forward, you know, at a very small cost to the generations to come after us, that they have facilities and opportunities and quality of life that are similar to what we had. Also, we're in those transitional years, where we're moving from being a young family to being, joining the older members of our community, and want to make sure that the quality of life continues to exist in this, in the city as it has for us for the last 25 years. I've been fortunate in that I've seen Walnut Creek from a lot of different aspects. I'm on the board of the Arts Foundation, on the Education Foundation. I've been a coach and a referee in youth sports. I owned a downtown business for nearly 20 years. So, I've seen Walnut Creek and a lot of it from a lot of different angles, and have really appreciated and benefited from it. But I also see, too, the needs that this city has, and see the facilities and the services that, you know, volunteers and staff work really hard to sustain, but really need some additional support in order to make sure that they stay that way. And so, I hope that you will, in fact, put this, this measure on the ballot and that Walnut Creek will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stankas.
Hi there, Audrey G. Thank you, Mayor Francois, and council members and city staff for all the amazing work that you've done on this. It was very helpful in terms of all the information. So, I've lived here for over 50 years, and I went to school here, I went to Walnut Acres and Foothill and Northgate, so I really benefited from a lot of the infrastructure that was here and loved it. I'm also the parent of two kids, and they're going through and also loving living in Walnut Creek. I'm a business owner here. I've got a law firm downtown. I'm one of those people, grew up here, went to school, came back, because I loved it so much, right? Because you guys, everyone has made such a wonderful, Walnut Creek's such a wonderful place to live. Past president of the Contra Cross the Bar Association and chair-elect of the Walnut Creek Chamber, but I want to make clear that I'm here in my personal capacity and not in my chamber hat on, and the chamber will be considering the proposal with its board, its membership, its business, its coalition partners, and be able to comment to the city after that consideration. So, what I say here is just my own personal views and from my own personal experience. And I support, strongly support this revenue measure, and that you would put it to the voters and to my fellow Walnut Creekian people to say, yes, let's make our, let's make Walnut Creek a really strong place to be. I love the quality of life, again, from the aquatic center, the arts, the park and recreation classes, the amazing open space, and, you know, it's so important with public safety as well, and of course, our thriving business district. Again, as a kid growing up here, I spent so many years swimming in the pool, going to meets, going to civic arts classes. I took sculpture and painting and dance classes and playing in Heather Farms and playing sports and hiking in the open space, and my childhood was better because of those benefits. And I want, and my kids have benefited, and I also want the generations after to benefit. And the infrastructure is at the end of its useful life. Please put it to the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. G.
Good evening. My name's Brian Milford. I live in Walnut Creek with my wife and two teenage children. We chose to move to this community because of its vibrant and safe downtown, access to open space, and incredible parks and recreational facilities. For 12 years, we've been able to enjoy that because of the sacrifices and investments the generations before us made, and we believe it's our time to make those same investments. Sales tax seems like a very wise and well-conceived idea, especially with a 10-year term on the end, allows us to make those investments and commitments so our future generations can enjoy the same lifestyle that we have enjoyed for the last 12 years here. Additional thoughts on the sales tax? I, I think it's the fact that we would be sharing that cost with the others who come to our community and spend time with us and all the amenities that we're providing them makes it a measure very easy for us to support, and I would ask you to place it on the ballot, and we will certainly hope that it passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milford.
Hi, I'm Jess Myers, Ms. Mayor, council people. I've been, our family moved here in Walnut Creek 36 years ago, 30, I'm been a 30-year member of the Walnut Creek Master Swim Team, 30-year member of the Walnut Creek Rotary Club. And I know this is going to, about quality of life, this program, and it's, this money's going to be used for a variety of uses, but recreation is a big part of what makes this community special. I can speak for the aquatics community. We are a little nervous about the life expectancy of our pool, and I can assure you that the aquatics community will be behind this issue. As you know, the Aquatics Foundation has pledged $3 million to the replacement of the pool at Heather Farm Park when it, when that time comes. So, again, we support this, this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Andrew Verdi. I hope everyone had a nice Independence Day here. It's very relevant that just a few cents and our founders and original members of this great country were overtaxed for stamps to communicate with their family and tea, and they started this great country. So, we are very blessed to be here. I would love for someone, have, have you ever seen a toll bridge price go down? So, taxes seem to inevitably always increase, and I remember even a day where there was free parking on Sundays. So, think of this in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Verdi. Any other speakers in the chamber would like to address the council on this item? I'm not seeing any, so we'll turn to Zoom. Looks like we've got some speakers there.
Yes, we have a few speakers. First up is Kathy Hicks.
Can you hear me?
We can. Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening, Mayor Francois and council members. My name is Kathy Hicks, a 53-year resident of Walnut Creek. Like you, I feel fortunate to live in a community that offers the quality of life that we enjoy, from a thriving downtown to the arts, to our parks, open space, and recreation, to quality open libraries. Although the city has a long history of prudent fiscal management, we need the proposed sales tax revenue to pay for enhanced public safety. We need the sales tax revenue to pay for the replacement of aging infrastructure like the swimming pools and community centers. We need the proposed sales tax revenue to maintain senior services and programs for children and teens, including additional library hours and access to books and technology. It seems fair that non-residents who use city services should also help to pay for those quality-of-life benefits. I urge you to put the proposed tax measure on the November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks.
Next speaker is Brendan Marianne.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I support the measure to place this on the ballot. A little bit about myself, I have been in Walnut Creek for 12 years. I'm a small business owner. I'm the father of three young children. I've been involved with the city in and out for a number of years, and I'm actually a prose commissioner as well. However, I'm not speaking to you tonight in my official capacity with the city, but as a private as a private citizen. When, when I first got to Walnut Creek, I didn't know anything about it. And my wife, who I was dating at the time, told me to come out and see her place, who she lived in Walnut Creek. And I said, that's fine. I kinda liked it. And later on, when she was convincing me to move out here, I said, I will, under one condition. It has a good sandwich shop. And it has a number of them, it turns out. But I digress. I, I love this place. Not being from California originally, and my wife and I have decided to raise our family here. We're getting involved with the city as much as we can, with the time that we have. And I really feel that this city is at a turning point where we can help support the next generation of citizens. Because I'm your average family, you know, it's, I'm, I'm gonna be paying as much as the next guy is just because of all this stuff that we do. We love going to Heather Farm, the pool and the pond and the centers and so forth. And we love going downtown to a new restaurant and walking for ice cream. And to piggyback off something that was said earlier, I don't own a Rolex watch, but I would hate for the day to come where I don't feel comfortable walking down Main Street, you know, because I don't feel safe. And I think that we need to really consider the opportunity we have at a small cost to the citizens and also non-residents to fund our future. So thanks for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Moran. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Justin.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Good evening. So thank you so much. My name's Justin Pager. I'm a Walnut Creek resident of 12 years now. I have two children, ages 12 and 8, a daughter and a son. I just wanted to open by saying we love the area. We live next to, next to the Shell Ridge Open Space and we frequent our parks and recreational facilities. My kids play a multitude of sports in Walnut Creek, including soccer, Little League baseball, softball, and are part of a local recreational swim team which uses the Clark facilities from time to time. We love our downtown and we also love to brag to non-resident friends about the quality and the diversity of our local businesses here in Walnut Creek. I wanted to offer that I support the sales tax measure for several reasons, including as a sales tax measure, the economic burden is minimized on local families, estimated at $10 per family per month. Certainly, while every penny matters to families and residents in a challenging economic environment, especially as we emerge from a pandemic, this is also a critical time to invest in the future of our city. I am particularly interested in seeing these funds be used to support sustainability initiatives, including investments in our parks such as turf playing surfaces, which will improve the quality of our fields of play and reduce water consumption at a time of unprecedented drought. I also support the use of the funds for improving our aging parks infrastructure and making investments to improve our local business community and public safety. I believe it's worth noting that as a sales tax rate, that our sales tax rate is significantly lower than most neighboring communities, as our city manager so eloquently recapped. I also wanted to offer, this is a tremendous accomplishment on the part of our civic leadership over time, but it's also the right time to reinvest in improving the quality of life of our community through this measure. So in closing, as a Walnut Creek resident and father, I support this sales tax measure. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Pager.
And there are no additional hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Anyone else in the chamber wish to address? I think we've heard from most folks here. And so we'll go ahead and close the public comment period. And I'll bring it back to my colleagues for any follow-up questions, clarifying questions of staff before we get into any deliberations. We could. Yeah, we'll be adjourned until 8:35. All right, welcome back. We're back from our recess, then we've just closed public comment on item 5A. And we're just about to get to any further clarifying questions of staff. Anybody like to lead us off? I had just a few for the city manager in response to some of the public comments. On the sunset, just if you could walk, walk us through that, then it's, it's a 10-year period, the, if the sales tax increase were to be approved by the voters, if we were to put it on the ballot and were to be approved, it would expire at the 10 years and then it, in order for it to continue at that point, the voters would have to approve an extension? Is that?
That's correct. You'd have to, the city and more specifically, the city council would have to go through the same process we are now of making a very conscious determination to put the matter before the voters. And the voters would have to decide whether or not they want to tax themselves. Otherwise, if the council were to not pursue putting on the ballot, or if there was not an initiative from the community to put it on the ballot, it would expire. And even if it were put on the ballot but not supported, it would expire as well.
And then is there any sort of escalation clause or is it just a straight one-half percent? It can't increase over that 10-year period? It's a fixed amount?
It's fixed.
Okay. Any other questions of, of staff? Okay. Why don't you lead us off, Mayor Protem?
Thank you very much, Mayor. And thank you to the members of the community who are here this evening, but also to the 4,800 of you who sent us surveys and the 500 of you who attend community meetings and talk to us and, or talk to us one-on-one, as well as to the 400 people who were surveyed in a phone survey. And I also want to thank the people who sent us letters. We did receive some letters and comments. And we also received some input over the weekend on maybe what I would call minor phrasing suggestions on the ballot question to ensure that, without losing any of the existing language, that it also reflects some of the nuances and the robust list of services and facilities that were outlined in both the findings of the ordinance as well as the recitals and the resolution. As my council colleagues probably heard, I had three areas in which I thought we could add a little language, and I talked to the mayor about it, and regarding some findings, as the suggestion that I, the suggestion about basically separately tracking the revenues and expenses as a part of the annual auditing process. And then also to add a little bit of language about the unavailability of federal stimulus dollars over any extended period of time. And then also would like to ensure that the language in the ordinance and the language of the resolu, of the recitals and the resolution are really synced up so that the community can be confident when they're reading the ordinance that it's in the ballot book. Because that's what they, do I, am I correct?
That is correct. You would want them to be very, very consistent, very similar.
But the ordinance will actually be sent to the public?
That is correct. What the public actually sees in the, in the ballot packet is the ballot question and the ordinance itself. That's what they are presented.
So with your, with the indulgence of my colleagues and with the help of the mayor and the city attorney and the city manager, some of the suggestions I had have been redlined in a copy of these. And in addition, the, oop, give both. Two for everybody. And can you pass one to the clerk? And are there copies, if anyone from the public?
Yes, there are.
Basically, the changes are pretty simple, just emphasizing or adding the.
So are these changes to both the ordinance and the resolution?
In some cases, yes.
Do you have, do you have the changes on the ordinance?
That's attachment three and attachment two. Did you get a two and a three?
That's three.
Okay. Yeah. Okay.
To make it consistent or generally consistent so that it's easy for the public to be able to really see what the facts are regarding this and what the broad range of services and facilities. And then also, there's a minor recommendation to the ballot question whereby, without losing any of the intent that was originally there, it also emphasizes downtown improvements and the arts. And you find the ballot question.
That would be page four of the resolution.
Resolution, page four of the, of attachment two. Mayor, you're, you wanna chime in?
Yes, I, you know, I've had the opportunity to review these prior and I'm looking at them again now. And they're, I think that the intent and the purpose is to make the two generally consistent, which is absolutely what we should be doing. I think in addition specifically in terms of section four of the resolution with the ballot question, I believe that's important because I think it reflects that the input that we received from over 200 people, I know as council members, we each reached out to a lot of community leaders and spoke about this, very, in a very objective way with our listening ears on and not in an advocacy way, but asking for genuine feedback. And the feedback that we heard, I think, is reflected in these changes, both in terms of economic recovery, downtown improvements and enhancements, and the arts, which are so critical to our quality of life. So I, I'm comfortable with them and I think it reflects kind of this whole process and journey that we've, we've been on for, for many months with this proposal.
I have a quick question for the city attorney. Because the word count on the ballot measure is absolutely critical and if you miss it, you miss it.
We, yeah, we have confirmed that the word count in the ballot question in section four of attachment two, that's before you this evening, does comply with the 75-word count. Just for the council's information, for the public's information, proper names and geographic designations or geographic names count as one word. So for instance, you'll see in there the city of Walnut Creek. That counts as one word. Walnut Creek counts as one word. Heather Farm Park counts as one word. And so when people are looking at it and counting, understand that that rule applies. And so with those rules applied, we are exactly at 75 words right now.
Who ultimately is the decision-maker on that?
So it starts with state law. State law specifically says, the Elections Code, section 9A specifically says that proper names as well as, as well as geographic designations count as one word. So that's the first law that applies. And then ultimately, it is a determination of the city elections official, which is the city clerk in Walnut Creek. And we have advised Ms. Martinez of the Elections Code sections as well too. So she's aware of it.
Okay. And, and does the, do the changes here change the possibility of this being designated more of a specific measure?
You mean a special tax?
Special tax?
These changes, both the resolution and ordinance that were in your packet originally, as well as these revised ones are clearly still just a general tax. I would direct your attention to the, the word including in the second line of the ballot question itself. So where it's talking about maintaining and enhancing city of Walnut Creek services and facilities, including, that's a non-exclusive list, ultimately with any general tax. The determination of how those funds are spent are within the discretion of the city council.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff or Mayor Protem or the mayor?
I had a quick question. The idea of an independent audit is very important to the integrity of a sales tax measure like this. And I see annual, the word audit has moved in front of independent. Whereas originally it said requiring annual independent audits, citizens oversight and all funds benefiting. Now we have annual audits, independent citizens oversight.
That, that is correct. The, the audit that the city commissions every year is always an independent audit. And then what's reported to the council is the results of those independent audits.
And that independent audit would also go to the citizens advisory committee?
That's correct. The audit for these funds would be presented to the citizens advisory committee as well too. And to the city council and made available to the public.
So I want to make sure everyone is comfortable and gets all their questions asked on the revisions. And then we should have the broader discussion about whether or not we want to do this, put this measure on the ballot. So I will not, we can start with the, with the broader question and give people extra time to look at the, the language changes. And who would like to lead us off on the broader question? Okay.
Go for it.
It is relatively appropriate that I am the person who leads it off because I was on the fiscal stability task force that was organized now 11 years ago. And, and we were a group of, I think, 30 people, 20 to 30 people.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
But you worked so long, it felt like 30.
Yeah. And, and we did spend a long time, almost a full year, working really hard to understand city financing and what Walnut Creek was doing and how we could do things better. And we recommended at the end of this, at the end of this effort, several ways to save funds and how to manage our funds better and perhaps ways that we could understand what was going on in our fiscal lives with more clarity. First of all, why did we do the fiscal stability task force? Well, it was pretty clear that the boom days of Walnut Creek were over and that we were gonna have to live in a more regulative amount of money. And it really made sense that we cleaned the decks. We'd been through the Great Recession. We cleaned the desk, decks and we, and we looked for everything that we could find that would make the world better. And we found a lot. And a lot of it was paid attention to by the city staff and implemented at the end of the time. In the meantime, we really did identify that 10 years ago, the infrastructure was wearing out and was probably at the end of its useful life. 10 years have passed and the infrastructure continues to wear out even more. Just because we are now confident that the city and the city staff Just because we are now confident that the city and the city staff learned from our efforts, it doesn't necessarily mean that our needs go down, it means that we have to adapt to a new world. So when I'm talking about budgeting, I talk about it in terms of a family and how they handle their money. And when times are good, they can go and spend a lot of money and do a lot of fun things. When times are not so good, they have to cut back, and they have to cut back in reverse order of need. That's probably backwards. You protect the money that you need to do what you need to do, and you defer getting your roof redone if you can't afford food and insurance and your mortgage payment. So what we have done over the period of time is behave like a family that really was trying to be responsible about their funds. Sadly, it becomes clearer and clearer that we're getting, our sources of funds are changing, not because we're being stupid or not because things are bad, they just are changing. And so now we have to look at what we're doing and making choices. And the choices are, we have to get rid of the easy stuff, and by easy stuff, doesn't mean that somebody isn't passionate about it, or doesn't mean that it doesn't mean a lot to the safety of our community, it just means you have to start paring down and you start to take this little piece of fat and that little piece of fat, and then maybe a little skin in the game, and then finally you get down to bare bones. And what we never want Walnut Creek to do is to start eating away at our, our body. We, we pared the fat down, we've been responsible, we were aware of the fact that there was this terrifying pension liability that could happen in the next 30 years, and we put aside money now so that we are ready to undertake handling that responsibly. So what do we do in the meantime? Actually, this, this potential sales tax does a lot that people don't really understand. It's intangible, as far as I can describe it. Most of the sales tax is paid for by people who have discretionary income. Much of what we use that sales tax is to improve our facilities and the quality of life and, and making available programs that people take advantage of, many of whom couldn't afford to pay for those if they didn't have the support of the city. So you'll hear, hear, hear sales tax being associated with it being a regressive tax. In fact, in my observation and many other people's observation, it is the wealthy helping to support people frequently that can't afford some things and make it possible. In the meantime, magically, the wealthy also get to have some benefits out of it, too. So it isn't just a one-way tax. And then the other thing is, much of these benefits that we have aren't just what you see spending the money on. They bring our community together because our community is doing things together. They're active in their recreation, they go to the arts at the theater or the movies in the parks. They make us a bigger, better community. And they also add to the attraction that we have for businesses because businesses want to locate near and in places that have a high quality of life for not only their employees' living condition, but also their employees' working condition. And selfishly, I step back and I say, if all this is so good, and Walnut Creek is in fact one of the gems of this entire region, this is really good for me. I own a house, and that part of the value of that house is, is so wrapped up in people's valuing the community, value the quality of life in Walnut Creek. I owned a house in Pleasant Hill, and it pretty much is a lot like the house I own in Walnut Creek. And that house is worth about half of what my Walnut Creek house is. So we're also, by trying to keep ourselves physically, physically stable and keeping the quality of life going, we're also being selfish about our own personal wealth and well-being. So I am going to, because I've waited patiently for 10 years, when we get around to this, I would like to make the motion to do the sales tax.
Thank you, Councilmember Haskew. Councilmember Will.
Thank you, and I appreciate your comments, too, because there's areas there that I'd actually forgotten and, and you reminded me of. It's, it's never an easy decision to put a tax measure on the ballot, and it's something that I've taken with the highest consideration. I know the city has put off for years some of the larger identified needs. We, I, we sat here a few years ago to help fund the pension reserve fund because we knew that we needed that. We continue to put off some of these ones that we looked at as, well, we can keep on fixing things and kicking this down the road. So over the last few months, surveys and calls, including my own calls to a variety of residents and groups, were overwhelmingly in support of public safety enhancements, recreational facility upgrades, library hours, crossing guards, the list goes on. I was stopped in the stores, people send me emails, people would come to the farmer's market, city council booth and talk about this. There were a variety of needs they continued to ask about. What are you doing about the homelessness issue? And what's going on with the Heather Farms? Is that going to be a 50-meter pool? This was constant. So when we look at crime prevention and public safety, which can include school resource officers, and we haven't had those since 2020, and we certainly have seen the need for that as well, from tragic incidents across the country, emergencies and preparing for them like fires and earthquakes, and of course, we're having those emergency discussions with, with Rossmore all the time now. The libraries being open on Sundays, I get asked that question every few weeks. All-weather turf soccer fields, which I know are needed because my own kids played soccer for years and years, and when it rained, there was no, there was one season, we, half the games were rained out, didn't have any field to play on. The Heather Farm pool upgrade, of course, and to keep it the same 50-meter size and homelessness intervention, all of these are critical. And there are several considerations as well. We've been the beneficiaries, as we've heard from several people who spoke tonight, including Councilmember Haskew, of the tax measures that were put into place 55 years ago to build the facilities that served this city so well for three generations. And any of us that have lived here a long time, and I've lived here, I went to high school here and then moved away for a number of years, and I've lived in the area now for the last 30 years, we've had the wonderful opportunity to use so many of these own facilities for ourselves and our children, and that amazing quality of life that we continue to brag about here in Walnut Creek. And we have to ask ourselves, do we want to step up for the next generation of Walnut Creek families? What about the people that have moved here in the last 10 years, who are paying the high cost of housing and apartment rentals to live here now? I mean, they're paying housing prices that are 10 times what I paid for my house. They moved here for that quality of life that they continue to hear about. And the fact is that there is a cost to that, and that has now overtaken our ability to be able to build and upgrade and increase our services based on what we're currently seeing as revenues. But there's another factor at play here, and we touched on it earlier during my questioning, and that is that online sales tax versus in-store purchasing sales tax. As more people are buying their products online, and we're seeing that in every single trend in the country, and we are no different, the sales tax primarily goes to the cities that are to host distribution centers. In the store, we get one cent out of that eight and have, that eight and three-quarters cent sales tax, and online, we get about 15% of that, as we'd heard from our city manager. The convenience of online shopping hurts the retail centers and the cities that host them. It's just a fact. I've done a lot of research on the true cost of the half-cent sales tax to my household as an example, and I talked about this a little bit during our questioning as well. A half-cent sales tax that has been averaged to calculate $10 per household per month, but that number is skewed, I believe. To spend an extra $10 a month, a household would need to purchase $2,000 worth of sales taxable goods. Think about that, that's a lot, that's how many appliances as well. In most cases, that is not groceries, and it's not medical prescriptions, devices or items that are purchased with food stamps because those aren't taxed. It's not mortgage or rent, as we've heard, it's gas, retail shopping, and dining out. That's what it is. And so that $10 a month average is due to auto sales being calculated as part of that. And granted, auto sales brings in a significant amount of tax revenue, and we're all happy to have that in Walnut Creek. But if people don't purchase a car annually, then that $10 a month will be quite a bit less. And most importantly, people who enjoy the Walnut Creek services and amenities and visit and shop in Walnut Creek will be paying for it as well, and we've heard that from several people, as well as the city manager, which is about half those people that would now help to support those upgrades and those uses and those services. If someone spends $200 on shopping or dining, this would provide an extra dollar that goes to the city. A dollar, that's it, on $200, which is a very nice night out, I would say. So that adds up. And as others have said, with half that sales tax being paid for by out-of-town visitors, this contributes to the cost of services that we residents of Walnut Creek provide for others. Things like the police, that unfortunately are needed more downtown, as we continue to hear, and those library hours, and those art and recreation programs, and the Heather Farm pool, and so much more that we gladly host for visitors from other cities. And really, the areas that have, that have pushed me over on this is being in the lowest tax bracket for the county now, and below our neighboring sales with, our neighboring cities with retail, we would not be out of line. But there does need to be oversight. And as we've seen from the, from this draft measure and the ordinance, there needs to also be a sunset on this. Because it would go to the general fund, which allows for flexibility, that's important. And why the need for the flexibility? Because if an emergency were to happen, or something like the pandemic, which was entirely unforeseen in 2019, the council that people elect and need to help allocate for that, we are those representatives, we are the stewards of it, and we've done a good job, the council, and not just this council, but all these previous councils. And similarly, if less funding is needed for an upgrade, or savings can be made in an area, then we need to make sure that the tax revenue is allocated properly, so a citizen oversight committee can help provide accountability and assurance to the voting public and to all the residents of Walnut Creek. So nobody likes to pay taxes, and nobody likes to pay more taxes. And none of us are blind to the inflation that we are seeing. We hear about it every day. We also don't know how things will be in two years. Will the economy be better, be worse, will it be the same? We can't make decisions based on the unknown. One thing we do know, construction and improvement costs will only become more expensive in two years, and in four years, and in six years. Even if eventually, we decided, you know, this is not the right time because there's some inflation, let's do it in two years or four years. It would cost even more in design, construction, and services than we are expecting. So it's, it's not that it would be cheaper for people in two years, it could get even costlier and much costlier. But if we, and we all live here, we've all lived here a long time that are on the dais, a lot of people that I talked to have lived here for 20, 30, 40, 50 years, some people that I talked to say, who are older than me, say, I was born in the house that I'm now living in. We want to continue to see the wonderful services and programs and amenities and quality of life that Walnut Creek is known for, and see that for the next generations, then this is how that we support that. I love Walnut Creek. I hope everyone who lives here and wants to raise their families here love Walnut Creek. This is the way that we can show that love for now and future generations. And when Councilmember Haskew makes that motion, I don't know if I'll be seconding it, because others may jump in first, but I will certainly be voting yes.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Will. Councilmember Darling?
Thank you, and thank you to everybody that came down tonight. I know there's a difference of opinion amongst here, but this is part of what makes Walnut Creek so special, is that everybody's engaged and looking to find a way to make their community better. That's why me and my family moved here 20 years ago. We found a community that felt safe, there was all the amenities we were looking for with our then-young family, and places to gather, the parks, the open space we were looking for, lots of options for entertainment and dining, and that was really important to us, a place that felt safe and welcoming. And as our kids got older and they started using all the different services that Walnut Creek has to offer, we found some interesting things. Our son, like many of us who have boy children, did not like school. He could not see a reason to do any of this reading or spelling or anything like that, but he found an art class out at the Heather Farms Community Center where they taught young children, far too young, to be using power tools and build things. And he loved it, it was great, it kept him going. He swam in the pool, he ran around the soccer fields, he burned off his extra energy, and that young man started as an engineer in training here at a local consulting firm this week. What this community has to offer kept him on the road to success. My daughter also, she was never, she never doubted whether or not spelling or reading was important, she knew it was. But she had a similar experience. For her senior project at Los Lomas, she wanted to learn more about public health. And so she talked her way into Donna Colombo's Good Graces out at Trinity Center and did an internship out there where she got to interview people who are experiencing homelessness, including a former Los Lomas student who had fallen on hard times. That experience really excited in her, the idea of public health, and she's now finishing her master's at UC Davis in nursing and looking to be a successful person to make the world better. So that's one of the things that's great about Walnut Creek, is there's a way for everybody to find their niche here, and we have a variety of services, a variety of ways for people to be successful, and that's part of why our community feels so safe and so secure. It's part of the reason why I decided to run in 2019. I'm the young one on the, the dais here. Okay, I'm the newer one, not the youngest one. But I really wanted to help our community continue to grow and to give back to this place that had given us so much. And then in the middle of the campaign, 2020 came along, and, oh my lord, it put so much more pressure on our parks, on our youth, on our seniors, on our open space. We tramped the open space down to the nubbins during COVID. And it just reinforced for me how important it is to continue to invest in our community. Two years later, COVID is still running rampant, and I understand the supply disruptions and the inflation and the energy costs. I mean, those children I'm bragging about are still using my credit card to pay, to fill their gas tanks. So I understand what food and gas prices are doing, but that is not enough to deter me from wanting to move forward with doing this. As Kevin Wilk said, we don't know what's going to be happening in two years. This is before us now, and it's, it's time to move forward with it. I appreciate the actions of past councils. We have longstanding policies that are used to ensure this city is always fiscally sound. We have incredibly low debt levels. I worked in local government and regional government before this. I was like, what do you mean we don't have any debt? When I came onboard, we've got healthy reserves and just a sound plan to manage pension costs and all the other unexpected things that can happen in city government. We've had a team that's gone out and prepared great long-range forecasting for our finances, something that was not available a few years ago, and they've been able to help us really see where this city is going. We've combed through all the different options to address the infrastructure deficit that we're struggling with. We were up at the cabin last weekend with some friends who are longtime swimmers here. One of my friends has just signed up for Medicare, and he, his first swim was at Clark Swim Center, so that pool's been there an awfully long time. We've listened to our community. I mean, Dan was on the trail, talking to everybody he could find, all of us were knocking on doors, talking at the farmer's market, meeting with our friends, answering questions at Safeway, helping explain, you know, the nuances of all the different things. And what I've heard, as my fellow council members have said, is people are interested in maintaining the quality of life of Walnut Creek. We moved here because it's a great place to live, and we want to see it continue to be there. We've also strengthened our financial partnerships with our community groups, like the Aquatics Foundation, contributing to the, their share of the expansion of, the replacement of the Clark Swim Center. I know the D. I know the DRAA is a tireless fundraiser for the arts, and many of the other local groups, the Library Foundation. So we have partnerships, so that those that are using the facilities the most are sharing in the cost. And the sales tax measure we're voting on tonight will keep us at the lower end, consistent with other people around us, and won't impact the food or prescription costs, as Kevin and others have mentioned. And half of it will be paid for the people that come into our community. We love to share our community. We love people to come here and enjoy, but sometimes that burden, especially downtown, especially the law enforcement costs, it'll be a nice to have cost-share partners from those people coming in. And we are committed to being transparent. We're going to include the independent citizens advisory panel, and I have, I served on one of those that was Bay Area-wide, and I've seen the power of that. The first year that our citizens oversight panel went and looked at the expenditures, it was the San Francisco Bay Restoration Authority, they had included in their ballot language that they were going to spend money throughout the county. And we looked at their audits, and we looked at their financial reports, and we said, "Well, that's really good, but you know, Contra Costa County is part of the Bay Area, and you guys haven't spent any money at all in Contra Costa County." And so the Lower Marsh Creek program began, and they began to spend money in Contra Costa County. So I think that's a great tool to help us all hold our feet to the fire and live up to the commitments that we're making to the voters. So I would be proud to second, third, fourth, or fifth this measure. I think we have a once-in-a-generation opportunity to invest in the city that we all love, so that the next generation can be here, especially since my kids are going to move here someday and bring their grandbabies with them and all that stuff. And I want it to be a great place for that next generation.
Thank you, Councilmember Darling. Mayor Protam Silva.
Thank you very much, Mayor. And thank you again to all of you who spoke with us tonight, both here in the council chambers, as well as through the convenience of the technological miracle of Zoom. I've lived in Walnut Creek for 37 years, and that's not as long as a few of my neighbors. But I will tell you, it is a generation or more. My husband and I married when we lived here in Walnut Creek. We raised our daughter here. I have worked in the city. My husband has worked here in the community. We have played in the community. Walnut Creek, the hallmark of Walnut Creek is quality of life that is different than so many other places, and we say that, yet I think it really is true. This is not just a place where you lay your head in bed at night to sleep. It is a place where you live all day long, seven days a week. We've had the benefit of longtime fiscal prudence. Our predecessors were incredibly brilliant at how they managed the funds of the city and took advantage of funds in the 1990s and the 2000s that were available to build infrastructure. That fiscal prudence is becoming more challenging. We're still fiscally prudent, but the rising costs of providing services, as well as our aging infrastructure and the cost to maintain and rebuild, are outpacing the rising revenues, because revenues do rise. And so we've faced with this gap, and then we had the Great Recession in 2008 to 2012. And then we had the pandemic. So every eight to 10 years, something goes wrong, and basically causes costs to rise, revenues to fall, et cetera. I thought it was most interesting for people who I have never met tonight to be talking to us, some here in the council chambers, some on Zoom. And many of you said, "It's time, we've had the benefit of this. It is time," and we've had the benefit of those who came before us, those who basically built this community in the 1950s, 1960s, and 1970s after World War II. And it's time to pay it forward. For me, now is the time to say yes for Walnut Creek. Now is the time to say yes to enhanced public safety and disaster preparedness. Now is the time to provide solutions, better solutions, for homelessness in our community. Now is the time to maintain senior services and arts programs and library services and other programs for youth. Now is the time to support small businesses, continued economic recovery, we're not out of this yet, and as well as additional economic vitality. Now is the time to invest in sustainability in our parks and open spaces, including our creeks and our watersheds. Now is the time to replace aging infrastructure, including facilities at Heather Farm Park that are used for aquatics and community centers and ballfields. And now is the time to say yes for Walnut Creek. Now is the time to pay it forward.
Thank you very much, Mayor Protam. Thank you to everyone who came here tonight. Thank you to the consultants who've led us along the way. Thank you to our city manager and staff who've diligently done outreach. You know, I don't think it can be said that we didn't do our due diligence on this before we got here tonight. So there was a lot of prep work that went into this, and I thought it was all time and effort that was extremely well-spent, because we listened and heard from a broad cross-section of this community. And like many of my colleagues, you know, and it was echoed in a lot of the comments from some of the speakers tonight, that, you know, my wife and I moved here 22 years ago this September, and had raised two children, our youngest just graduated from Los Lomas. There's no part of this community that hasn't touched our lives for the better, that we haven't benefited from, from the Lindsay Wildlife Experience, to Larky Park, to Clark Swim Center. And I've noticed, you know, to the library, I could go on and on, but there was always community at the root of those. So when we were at the Clark Swim Center, it was at a big city meet that brought the entire community together to come together in pursuit of an aquatic event, in support of sports, to see young children, you know, win, lose, or draw. We were all there together cheering for each other's kids, sitting together, talking, getting to know one another in a way that I've always worked outside of Walnut Creek that I didn't have the benefit or the opportunity to do, but for those events. And I remember, when I first got involved with the city and was on the Transportation Commission, I told then-Mayor Kathy Hicks, who's now on the Library Foundation Board, how much we lived near Larky Park, and how much the kids enjoyed going to the new playground improvements that the council had approved, and going to Lindsay Wildlife. So like many speakers have said tonight, and a lot of my colleagues, now is the time for us to pay this forward for the next generation, and we've benefited so much from these facilities and programs that I want to see the next generation of families, the grandchildren that Councilmember Darling talked about, I want to see that they have the same benefits that we all enjoyed for so many years. And I will say that it's very important to me that the money will stay locally, it'll improve the quality of life for our residents. We have the lowest, one of the lowest sales tax rates, as many have said, and there's great fiscal prudence that's been shown by this city, by this council. And even with this revenue measure, when I was out talking to people, people said, "Why don't you go for the full percent? That's not what we needed." We did an assessment, it's a half cent, and we can live within the means of that, we can live within a 10-year sunset, and we absolutely should have independent oversight by an auditor and the citizens oversight committee. I appreciate Councilmember Haskew being involved with the Blue Ribbon Task Force, which suggested this idea 11 years ago, I think. And so it's been a long time coming, and things that my colleagues have said that have, you know, jumped out at me is show the love, and we can't make a decision based on unknown. It's time to say yes to Walnut Creek. I view this as an opportunity for us to take our community to the next level, to not just maintain our quality of life, but really improve it in a way that we probably can't even imagine right now, that the things that we can do with a new swim center, or extra library hours, extra patrols downtown, all of those can really take this community to the next level and make it even better than we imagined it was, or it was in the past. So I, too, will be supporting this, and I'll say that, you know, I make a concerted effort to do almost all my shopping in Walnut Creek, and so I will bear the cost of this, perhaps a maximum of $120 a year. But for what I get in return for that, this is absolutely worth it. The trade-off is completely worth it to me. I've done the cost-benefit analysis. I wouldn't live in any other community, and I think it's time to reinvest in our community and to make it have even a more positive and productive future. So, but before I take, before we entertain a motion, I would suggest maybe that we just take an eight-minute break. I want to make sure that everyone has an opportunity to review the proposed revisions that are on the dais, and we'll be back at 9:30, and then I think there might be a mad scramble to make a motion. All right, we're back, and from our break, and we've got the revised resolution and ordinance, which has been passed out on the dais. There's also copies in the back of the room for members of the public. There's one item that we hadn't necessarily addressed, and that's in Section 8E of the resolution. There are some blanks there for, it's on page five, of which council members would be authorized to submit written arguments in favor of the measure and in response to the opposition.
Mayor, if I may, just to suggest, we have the recommendation slide up, if you want to break this into three pieces and three motions, if you'd like to do so. And, you know, the first question is the big one, of whether or not you want to put this on the ballot. If that were, I think I can read the tea leaves on this one, but if that were a yes, then make a motion on directing the city attorney, as well as then identifying the procedures processes, and more specifically, those who would be responsible for submitting the ballot.
I have a technical question, though. When we adopt the resolution, there's some blanks that need to be filled in. So perhaps we need to...
You could reorder.
Yeah, so if the council, to the city manager's recommendation, if the council wants to provide direction on all three of these, then your direction is incorporated in a final motion, which would incorporate the additional names, because all of the, both the resolution and the ordinance this evening are connected, the ordinance is actually an attachment to the resolution, and the resolution has all of the actions, including the ballot question that need to be conveyed to the county for placement on the ballot.
Okay, so probably we could do this probably in, I think we could do it in one motion, or no, do you want to do it in three?
You can do it in one motion, but as you were all beginning to indicate, the one bit of information that we don't have right now are the names of the council members who are authorized to submit the ballot argument and the rebuttal argument.
So my proposal on that front is that it be myself and Mayor Protam Silva as the mayor, and Mayor Protam, and with my colleagues' indulgence.
Agreed.
Okay.
As long as we let Luella make the motion.
You bet.
And that I have, I think it would be that I would, as the mayor, would have the discretion for it to be signed by other members of the council, or associations, or individual voters.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's not an "and" that one, it's just a...
That, well, the way it's drafted before you, it's a singular, it can either be singular or it can be two. But it is really, it's identifying the authority to be signed by other members of the city council, or bona fide associations, or individual voters. So it's really identifying who can sign.
The mayor, I think the mayor's prerogative, it makes sense to me.
So, but this is not an absolute, this is if necessary? Explain.
It's real, yeah, it is, so ultimately, there will be a maximum of five signatures on the ballot argument. Those five signatures on an argument in favor, or in theory against, the measure do not have to be the same five signatories as the rebuttal arguments, and so there is a potential for 10 different signatories between the primary and the rebuttal argument.
And I think, given the complexity of 10 signatures, I would want it to be one person, and leave that to the mayor.
But a committee makes recommendations and weighs in on all of that.
Right, it's the two-member committee that is the entity that is authorized to submit the ballot argument. So I mean, to be clear, ultimately, you have to get consensus of two of you, whoever the two are appointed, to be able to submit the argument.
But let's say there's a citizens committee that might be campaigning, having served in, on those in the past.
So...
I remember having to go get the signatures for a ballot question for the Walnut Creek School District Measure in 2001, and I was not on the governing board. They may have recruited him, though, so I can't...
Right, it is, so the way that it's structured right now, it would take the two council members, the mayor and the Mayor Protam, to authorize the submission of either of the ballots on behalf of the council. So that will require consensus of the two of you. The only other portion of this is who are the other authorized signatories, and when I say other, it's any of the five, because council members don't have to sign either one of these ballot arguments, the council just gets to submit the ballot argument. And when the council does that, it, under state law, provides a priority for that ballot argument over others.
Okay.
Yeah, are you comfortable with that, Mayor Protam?
Yeah, I just want the public to understand that they have a role to play in this, that we're not writing it ourselves.
Yes. Okay. So with that, I am, as, let's see, we're going to, I'm going to get my staff report here. Okay. I'm going to let Councilmember Haskew do the honors. On the first question of consider adoption of a resolution to place a 10-year half-cent sales tax measure on the November 8, 2022 ballot for voter consideration, of course, with the revisions on the dais and the resolution and the ordinance, and with the names filled in in Section 8 as we discussed. Take it away.
Really? Okay. I make the motion that we do what he said, you little rat. And if the attorney wants a regular, like, motion, motion from me, I recommend that we adopt the resolution establishing November 8, 2022, as the election date for voters to consider an ordinance imposing a half-cent sales transaction and use sales tax for the period of 10 years, ordering the submittal of the ordinance to the voters at the election, requesting that the Board of Supervisors consent to the consolidation of this election with statewide general election on the same date, and to direct the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis and specifying procedures and processes related to ballot argu- but the motion is made with great heartfelt enthusiasm.
As the baby, can I second, or is Kevin going to second?
Well, I actually thought the mayor might.
You know, I, I'm comfortable, please.
I will second that motion.
Thank you.
And roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Haskew?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilk?
Aye.
Councilmember Darling?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Silva?
Absolutely.
Mayor Francois?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, I thought so. So, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you for the effort. Thank you to staff. Thank you for all the collaboration. And on to November, and let's win there. And before we move on, I want to adjourn the regular meeting of the city council. This evening, we're adjourning in honor of Councilmember Kevin Wilk's father, Robert Wilk. Robert, known to all of us as Bob, passed away on Tuesday, July 13, after a long battle with leukemia. He was born in Bridgeport, Connecticut, and joined the Coast Guard and fought in the Korean War. He and his beloved wife, Nessa, of 64 years, traveled the world and visited dozens of countries, including many in Africa that we heard about yesterday. Bob was a teacher until finding his career profession in 1975 in marriage and family counseling. He inspired many throughout his career. And tonight, we honor the memory of Bob Wilk. And on behalf of your council colleagues and your city family, we offer you and your family our heartfelt condolences.
Thank you so, thank you. I'm going to take my mask off for this. So thank you so much, Mayor, and, and my colleagues. As I mentioned before, I really appreciated you all and the city manager coming to the memorial yesterday. And just wanted to highlight a couple of things about my dad that really stuck out yesterday from stories that I also heard from other people. But one thing that a lot of people didn't know, even though you could, you could talk to him for five minutes if you didn't know him, and you knew that we lived in Kenya for two years. That was, that was right out there. What people didn't know is that he started the running program of Kenya for all of track and field for where we lived in northern Kenya. And this was in the mid-'60s, when the Kenyan running program was truly at its beginning. And he was part of the foundation of the Kenyan running program that we're seeing the success to this day from the World Track and Field Championships that are currently happening in Eugene and all through the Olympics. Kenyan runners are known now as the world's greatest runners. My dad was starting that program. He was friends with people of all ages. He had two teenage girls that visited him last week in his last few days because he was so important to some of the mentorship that he had done in their Jewish youth studies. And he's got best friends that are 20 years younger than him, all ages. And the last thing I just wanted to say is that when any of our loved ones die, or when parents die, you'll hear people say, oh, he was such a good man, or that was a good person, your dad was a good man. I, I lost count of how many people last week told me, Kevin, your father was a great man. He was an icon. He's one of the greatest men I've ever known. And that really was profound, and it was, it really struck me that my dad made a huge impact on so many people, even though obviously to me, he made my, he's made his greatest impact to me as my dad. So thank you very much. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome. And thank you all. Have a nice evening. We are adjourned.